slash channel 12 or we're also on YouTube, youtube.com slash Ames channel 12, also on MediaCom where you can join on the Zoom meeting. Your access information can be procured from the agenda which is posted on the City of Ames website. Good evening, conference board members. First thing we'll do on item number one, roll call please, Amy.
Ames City Council. Story County Board of Supervisors.
Here.
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 Ames Community School District. Gilbert Community School District. Nevada Community School District.
That's it.
And United Community School District.
Here.
Thank you. Moving on to item two, consideration of the minutes of February 25th, 2020. Is there a motion to approve or are there any comments prior to entertaining a motion?
Move approval.
Moved by Story County Board Supervisors.
Second.
By Ames City Council, that's your, thank you. Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carried, thank you. Moving on to item number three, as the conference board is aware, Brenda Swaim is acting assessor at this point in time. We are in the process of need to fill the city assessor position. And so Brenda, I'm going to turn it over to you. I trust you have some information to share with us, so I'll let you take it away.
Thanks, John. Appreciate it. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for attending this evening. Thank you for your service on your respective boards and most notably, thank you for serving on this board. Greg Lynch decided to desire to retire at the end of the year last year. So I am presenting our annual report and budget tonight. My name's Brenda Swaim. I am the chief deputy assessor, serving as acting assessor. I'd like to thank Greg for putting together most of this report prior to his departure as he knew we would be short-staffed. I'll endeavor to present the highlights of the report and answer any questions that may come up. Let's start on page one, jumping to the bottom. Where you see Board of Review, the Board of Review heading. You can see we have two vacancies. While it would be normal to have a single vacancy this year, another member decided to retire, leaving one year left on his term, and that will need to be filled. As we're losing a Realtor, one of the positions should be filled with a real estate or construction expert as the code Iowa code authorizes. As I'm sure you're all aware, with Greg's retirement, the examining board met and requested the register from the Department of Revenue. Um, that's about all I really have to say about page two. It's kind of boilerplate-ish. Moving to pages three and four, I'm going to ask that you look at one of the handouts I sent to Amy late in the day today, showing table two, um, pretty much being crossed out. So if you will, please focus more on tables one and three. Um, those values are more trustworthy. Table one shows assessed values up by 3.2%. Table three shows taxable values up by 4.7%. And that's about all I have to say about those tables. I'm going to pause for a moment to see if anybody's got any questions before I move on.
Any questions for Brenda on what she's presented thus far?
Brenda, what accounts for the lowering percentage from what we had for table two and what we now see in table three?
It was out of last year's table. So apparently there was a copy and paste and forgetting to replace it with current numbers and it was, it was the root, the numbers from last year.
Thank you.
You bet.
Will you be issuing new tables, Brenda?
I can certainly replace those and send them, I, I will have to see if Greg has got those on our server. I didn't readily find them, but if you're interested in them, I can certainly get those to you.
I think it'd be helpful to have just some updated information that is complete as a part of your report.
Okay. And should I send those, should I just send those to Amy to send out?
Uh, that or I could, or I send them to Diane.
Okay.
You can get them out to the, all the conference board members then.
Very good.
And if you are not able to find that information, Brenda, just send some kind of explanation so we can know what's, what's transpired to, just to close the loop.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Okay, on page five, currently there are two vacancies that exist, so everybody's pulling extra duty. It is my hope that the hiring process for the assessor will be swift. On, um, attachment C, located at the very end of your report, shows the quarterly sales activity. Looking at new construction sales, the quantity decreased, but the price per square foot remained steady. The median was up by 2.8%. Existing house sales were very active, with the quantity up by over 9%. The price per square foot, as well as the median price, were also up from last year. Any questions on the quarterly sales report? Hearing none, I'll move on. Page six is a summary of the assessment notices we mailed last year. And with assessment notices come assessment appeals. On page seven are the summaries for both the informal hearings as well as the regular Board of Review hearings. There was a question in the mini-board about the number of residential Board of Review cases. I amended the document to note that of those 183 cases, 144 work two condominium regimes that are held by a single owner. On page eight is a table listing the appeals that have been pursued beyond the Board of Review, either in district court or PAB, the Property Assessment Appeal Board. Their status is noted in the far right column. While some have been settled, many are still active as the court and PAB systems are backed up due to COVID-19. Any questions?
Brenda, is the, uh, go ahead.
Okay.
Uh, I'm sorry, I did have a question.
Okay.
I'm getting some really weird feedback. Is the number of residential appeals or protests, when you take into consideration that 144 with condominiums, uh, that leaves about, uh, 39, 40, is that about average per every year?
No, that's a very low year.
Okay. And then on the next page for PAB and district court, is that about an average amount that you would see going to PAB? And you're, I know you've been on a long-term employee, I'm just curious what you've, what you observed over the years?
Well, since we've been including them in our report, it, it always takes up about a page.
Okay.
So it seems a little heavy, but generally takes up a whole page. So, and some of these, while there are multiple cases, it's really the one project. If you look toward the bottom, where you see all the South Loop Drives, that's the research part. So it looks like more cases than it is.
Okay, thank you.
Brenda, I do have one question as well. I asked this on the mini-board and I always kind of get it mixed up. So on page seven where it references the, um, the Board of Review, the number of protests upheld, so the number upheld, so if I am the homeowner and I am protesting that, the number upheld means you won or I won?
And thanks, Lisa. I actually, because you asked that in mini-board, I also made a note on the page at the very bottom saying cases where the appeal was upheld means that the petition of the property owner was granted.
Great, great. Yep, I did see that, but I just, I, I think some people kind of missed that, want to make sure if they're listening, they, they catch that.
Yeah, it is a little confusing.
Thank you, Lisa. Any other questions before Brenda moves on? Okay, Brenda, go ahead.
Okay, on page nine, I'm going to discuss the budget proposal, which is attachment A. Again, I'll point out there, I found some errors and changes were made. When I was completing the report to the Department of Management, I realized no money had been allocated for the vacancies in our office for the remainder of this fiscal year. So I had to increase the projected expenses for the assessor and staff line items. And you'll see there in yellow, um, fiscal year 21, 2021 budget for those line items. It was originally, uh, budgeted for 5% increase last year, and that's what's in the yellow. But what we have in the report is what we modified. So we tried to mirror the city when possible, and when the city only got 4%, we lowered ours to 4%. And those were the numbers that were used rather than what was actually budgeted. So I just wanted to make sure you're aware that really more than that was budgeted last year, um, but we ended up using our modified numbers, the lower amount. Hopefully that makes sense. I apologize for the confusion. The mini-board also helped me trim a few of the line items. So I'm proud to say that the lower, uh, it lowered the overall increase for the next fiscal year to only 2%. Are there any questions?
Brenda, I just have one, one question on the assessor line FY 2021 projected expenses for the year. I'm assuming that you, Greg being vacant, I mean, his position being vacant for a month or a couple of months or so it's going to take, you've gone ahead and taken that in consideration and the amount that you plugged in, is that correct?
Yes, I did. And that also includes his accrual payout. So that also came out of there. And then I, um, I used eight pay periods to budget for that, and I used six pay periods to budget for the other staff member.
Okay. And, um, the other question on the, on the vacant staff member, are you, is that an active pursuit right now for administrative assistant? Or are you going to wait until the assessor is hired and let them, him, he, she, he or she fill that position?
I can't say for sure. We are very short-staffed, but it also takes manpower to train somebody. So first we've got to get some other things taken care of before I even worry about it.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Are there any other questions for Brenda with respect to the budget?
When were the Board of Review salaries last increased?
It's been quite some time. I don't, I know it was prior to Greg getting here. So that's over 15 years ago.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Can you just talk about that for a second, Brenda? You're recommending going from $17.50 to $35 an hour.
Sure.
Have you talked to some other municipalities that have Board of Review members? And is that like a going rate or?
We discussed that briefly in mini-board. There is a salary survey which, that the assessors statewide, um, every jurisdiction reports into this salary survey every year. It includes more than salaries, but it, it talks about, you know, how many people are in your office, um, how many board members do you have, how do you pay your board members, how much do you pay your board members? Everyone does it a little bit differently. But that was the basis that Greg used. I believe he said the highest was $40, and he kept it below that. But it'd been a number of years since it was increased, and because we have such difficulty filling those, we wanted to make it a little more attractive in hopes that we could get somebody on there and get them to stay because obviously it takes a couple of years to get under your belt, you know, if you get a feel for it.
Okay. Any other questions for Brenda with respect to the proposed 21, 22 budget? All right. Anything else, Brenda, you wish to highlight tonight?
That's all I have.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, on behalf of the conference board, and all your kind of pulling double duty, and I appreciate, uh, your efforts. And again, as I shared with the conference board, only because we have a deputy assessor, one that has lots of years under the belt, um, allows us to continue on without having some kind of urgency. I mean, we have urgency to fill the position, we know you're short-staffed, but, um, it allows the service to our community to continue, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any further questions for Brenda with respect to her report?
Um, I do, Mayor. Brenda, I believe, uh, since you were just talking about the, um, funding for the Board of Review, I think of our discussion in the mini-board, wasn't it, that last year it was, it had been increased? And so you were maintaining that same amount for this fiscal year?
Yeah, if you remember, there was quite a change on that one. I think it was like $18,000 in there.
Right.
And we don't know if it was fat-fingered or why that was. We could not find any good reason. So yes, I just maintained it at last year's.
Thank you.
All right. Entertaining a motion approving the recommendations of the assessor's report. So moved. Moved by Ames City Council, Garten.
Okay.
Seconded by Merkin Board Supervisors. Any discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Saying aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Carried. Entertaining a motion to receive proposed budgets. Adoption of budget will occur after the hearing is held, which will be setting on our next item.
So moved.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm sorry, let me make sure, it was, it was Latifah, was that you that made the motion?
No, Lisa.
Sorry, I'm trying to keep everyone straight here, sorry.
All right.
And who made the second? Who seconded it? Amber did, thank you, City Council. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carried. And entertaining a motion to set 6:00 PM on February 23rd, 2021 as a date for public hearing, a proposed FY 2021, 22 city assessor's budget.
So moved.
Tifa.
Second.
And Gloria, thank you. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Thank you. Moving on to the conference board comments. Gloria, any comments tonight?
I just want to thank Brenda for stepping into that gap that was created by Greg's retirement.
Thank you. Tim?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Rachel?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Thank you. Bronwyn?
Nothing for me, thanks.
David?
Um, thank you also, Brenda. I'll, I'll also thank you for addressing the, the question I had about, about fiber connectivity. I think that I got the answer I was looking for, so that was helpful. I do have a question about when we move into the, the next phase with a new assessor. And the question for the board is, do we want to change any of the structure going into that new regime? For example, um, by adding some more structure to the mini-board? Or by establishing a procedure for formal evaluation of the assessor once we've chosen one? So my question, if, if we want to do these sort of things, how would we go forward with this?
Uh, that's a good question, David. I would think that there probably come back. Um, we could, we sort of could, uh, specifically talking about, we talked about last year, that is a formal review of the assessor. I know the assessor reviews the deputy assessor in terms of, uh, for performance. That'd be one thing. And also, I think there's a little ambiguity in terms of the mini-conference board, who actually chairs it, who's the secretary, et cetera. Are those the two items or is there, or additional items?
Yeah. That's basically what I had in mind. And, and so the question I have now is, is this something that, that the conference board should vote to put on an agenda to discuss in the future? Or is this something that would more naturally come up at the time when a, some names are being brought to the conference board for consideration of appointment?
Um, it would seem to me that given what we're talking about, we can certainly do it on February 23rd. We have, it's going to be a public hearing, the conference board meeting placed on the agenda at that time.
Would, would you like a, a motion now to, to place it on the agenda or?
Let's see if the conference board wants to do that.
Okay, so I would move to place the topics of, um, the mini-board structure, um, specifically whether there's a chair and a secretary. And the, the question of, um, how we would, uh, evaluate the assessor's performance after appointment of a, a long-term assessor on the next conference board agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion. As Latifah, uh, supervisor. Any discussion?
So just procedurally, I'm supportive of the motion. Um, is there a way in which we can ask perhaps the City of Ames staff to do some light work to come up with some proposals that we might consider? I'm a little nervous about just sort of having a, a blank slate and, and, um, so I don't know if that could be part of the motion, David.
Um, that's a great consideration because I certainly have no, no skills to bring to this to answer the question of how to evaluate an assessor. And I, I don't know if any of us do.
I think it's a good point, Tim. I think that would agree that after David's motion, I was thinking that would probably be something we'd ask, um, city manager, who he would recommend on the staff to help us bring something back to the conference board for their consideration, not just have it as an open, I know a discussion. I guess, I think if that's okay with everybody, that would be understood as part of the motion versus being in the motion, unless you want to be in the motion, David.
Uh, that's fine with me. It, it seems like if there's a, a comparable structure that already exists at the Story County Audit Assessor's Office, then maybe that's something we can learn from too.
Any other discussion? Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Carried. Anything else, David?
Thank you, that's all.
Amber, can you give us a update on the, you probably knew it was coming, on, uh, the process and how it's going and where we're at?
Um, so Lisa and Sabrina and I met a few weeks ago, um, to sort of establish the, formality, I guess, of the examining board. So I'll be serving as chair, and we officially requested the, um, register of names from the Department of Revenue. And so we've received that. There's approximately 160 names on the list. About 60 of those are retired individuals though, so we're looking at, um, 95 to 100 people. Um, and then the City of Ames Human Resources Department is actually going to be assisting with, um, the initial, I guess, application and vetting process. And so Bethany, our HR director, and Brian Phillips, our assistant city manager, um, are putting together a formal job description based on what we used, uh, many years ago when Greg was hired. And we'll have that, um, posted to the City of Ames website here in the next couple of weeks. And then they will send a formal letter to those not retired, excuse me, not retired individuals, and notify them that the application is open and invite them to apply. And we estimate that that will be open indefinitely, um, just because the last time, uh, this came about, Greg was the only applicant that we had. And so we're, we're just not sure how many people will actually be applying.
I don't remember Greg being the only applicant. There were several.
That's what I was told.
Okay.
So Amber, process-wise, so does the examining board then meet after, uh, the city then vets through those vet list or?
Yeah, depending on how many candidates there are, um, you know, they may do some initial vetting. If there's just a few, then they'll come all directly to the examining board, and then we'll review them. And again, based on the number of applicants, we would likely invite finalists in for sort of a full day, um, show where they would meet with the examining board. We would introduce them to the assessor's staff and have them, you know, talk to them for a little bit, um, and then hopefully end with a public presentation. Um, but again, we're, we're sort of playing that by ear based on the number of applications that we get. And then the examining board will make a final, final recommendation to this board for appointment.
Any questions for Amber? Thank you. Any other comments, Amber? Okay. Lisa? Linda?
All right, nothing else, thank you.
Just one thing. Um, I understand that the 2005 was a study about having, um, maintaining this separate assessor's office, the City of Ames, that that was being updated by the city administrator. And just wanted to, um, remind, uh, you that, that I had had discussions with the mayor and the city administrator about whether the city would be, um, willing to take over the payroll for the city assessor's office, which currently is being done by Story County. And everybody kind of thinks of the city assessor's office staff as city employees. They're on the city, um, benefits plans, I think deferred comp and also for HR. So it doesn't make a lot of sense to us that, uh, the county does the payroll. So I just wanted to remind everybody that we had brought that issue up.
Okay. I will follow up with Steve, Linda, and see where his thoughts are on that, and then we'll, we'll probably bring that back next time, just to give you an idea of what I'm talking about on that, so.
Okay, let me know if you have any questions.
I may actually have him contact you and/or Lisa to, to discuss that, um, further. And then if it's going any farther, then, uh, if needed, we'll bring it back to the conference board. Okay?
Fine, thank you.
Latifah, welcome.
Thank you. I, I don't have anything. My only question was, um, what Linda just brought up, so.
Are you still drinking from a fire hose?
It's, it's slowing down a little bit. Budget sessions are slowing down, so.
Very good. Joe, anything tonight?
No comments or questions.
All right, thank you, Joe. Jennifer?
I'm good, thanks.
All right. All right, entertaining a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay. Motion by Hens. All in favor, say aye.
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 We adjourned. Everyone, thank you for, uh, coming. We greatly appreciate, uh, your time this evening. And thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good evening, everybody. When I call the regular meeting of the Ames City Council for Tuesday night, January 26, 2021, to order. Welcome, everybody. And again, with the due to the ongoing pandemic, this meeting has been conducted electronically by the Code of Iowa. Those who wish to participate can do so by utilizing the Zoom platform. Or you can call toll-free, 888-475-4499. And the Zoom meeting ID is 826593023. And this information can also be found on the City of Ames website under City Council Meetings and the agenda for this evening. Well, for the first time that I can remember in my tenure, we have a recognition ceremony this evening, and one that is an outstanding one. And I'm going to turn it over to our chief, Rich Higgins, to recognize three very brave, heroic individuals in our community. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Ames City Council. Tonight, it's my pleasure to publicly recognize and thank Robert Dean, Nathaniel Ward, and Ovi Elustafa for their heroic actions rescuing trapped occupants from an apartment fire last month. They're joining us this evening. And let me give you a little bit of background. I even have a video I'll share with you. On Wednesday, December 9, 2020, around 4 o'clock in the afternoon, passersby noticed smoke and flames coming from a two-story apartment complex on South Dakota Avenue. Multiple people saw and called 911 to report the fire. However, three individuals, those being recognized here tonight, decided to stop and make sure everyone was out of the building. With heavy smoke and flames coming from the front of the structure, locking the occupants' only door out, Robert, Nathaniel, and Ovi started knocking on windows and yelling for the residents to get out. The first-floor resident heard the knocking and was able to escape through the flames to safety. Working against the clock and realizing that the only way out of the second-story apartment was going to have to be through a window, Robert, Nathaniel, and Ovi quickly started looking for a ladder and devising a plan to get the two trapped occupants out safely. One occupant was able to jump to the waiting arms of the rescuers. The second occupant was rescued by using a step ladder to get on top of a nearby garage roof and then used again to access the second-story window. The selfless acts of Robert, Nathaniel, and Ovi are heroic in every sense, and it's with great pleasure that we recognize them this evening and publicly thank them for their actions. Pretty exciting. It's a pretty great moment for us to share with them and share with the public what they have done. And I got a video. I'm told with the video that if everyone turns off the cameras, the video will work better. So we'll give that a try. But let me set the video just a little bit for you. Sure, the footage is actually from the fire scene that shows Robert, Nathaniel, and Ovi in action. The video was taken by Ames Police Officer Selena Rowland's body camera. And special thanks goes out to Officer Rowland for her actions that day, which aided in the rescue. All right, we're going to give the video a try.
Is there anyone else inside?
Anyone outside?
No.
Do you know about upstairs?
Anyone outside?
Ames 58.
I knocked on all the windows. Okay, well, you're going to have to come out the window. You're out of choice. You can't come out the door. Do you have a ladder?
No.
Fire is on their way.
Okay, who's up there?
How many people are up there?
They're out there. Hey, you're going to have to, if you get over here, if you get to this, if you get near.
Is he the only one up there?
There's two.
Two?
There's a guy and a lady, yeah.
Fire is... Oh, I don't know about that.
So pretty exciting video. Any questions or comments for the group? Wow. You guys are amazing. That was really absolutely unbelievable. And I just didn't have my eyes on, kind of speechless. So council, does anyone else wish to extend congratulations and thanks before maybe give these gentlemen an opportunity to say anything if they want to? Gloria, yeah?
Yes, thank you so much for that. Wonderful job, guys.
Wish we were in person. So go ahead and shake your hands and do more than just be on this little Hollywood square screen here. But Bob, anything you wish to say tonight? Oh, you're still muted, Bob.
There you go.
Yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, I don't have much really. You know, Nathaniel and I were just driving by and we just couldn't help but turn around. We thought that, you know, there was just a small, small little fire. And by the time we turned around, you know, it engulfed most of the front side of the building, as you saw. So, you know, again, I think it's just a testament to like what we can do, like when we really work together as a community and don't just pass by just because you think it's being handled. I think that's the big thing, the big takeaway. And I'm sure Rich would agree. Check your smoke alarms.
Thank you. Nathaniel?
Yeah, I just echo what Bob mentioned. But, you know, 2020 was a tough year for a lot of people. And I'm just really glad that, you know, no one was really hurt in this. And we were able to, you know, help them in any way we could. So thank you for the recognition. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Ovi?
Hey, I don't really have much to add to what the two guys said. But I'm just really glad that I was there at the right time, at the right place. Just going to give the cops the phone call. I want to thank the chief of the fire department a lot just for giving me a call and for his kind words. I really appreciate that a lot. And thank you all for this recognition.
So you guys, did you guys know each other beforehand, or are you all friends, or?
No, actually, we're separate. So both of them were together and I was alone. So I was driving alone and then I saw the fire. So I made a, I think, illegal U-turn. I hope no cops are hearing us. But I made the U-turn and then they saw me kind of getting and pulling up to the house. And we all just kind of really didn't even think that much. We just kind of ran and tried to get as much people out and just see if there's anyone inside.
Well, again, our hats are off to you. Thank you so much for probably some people that may be alive and not injured because of your heroic efforts. So thank you very much. You make Ames proud and a great place to live. Thank you very much. Anything else, chief?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd be remiss if I didn't share a fire safety message with you all and our public that's listening tonight. So the Ames Fire Department will take this opportunity just to remind everybody to always know two ways out, whether it's your home, place of work, or it's a hotel you're visiting. Knowing two ways out will double your chances of getting out safely during an emergency when every second counts. Know two ways out. I appreciate everybody's time tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, chief. Nathaniel, Bob, Ovi, thank you so much for coming. Appreciate it. Okay, going to move on to item number two, proclamation and observance of the Ames Rotary Club's 100th anniversary. Whereas the Rotary Club of Ames, Iowa, received its charter from Rotary International on March 1, 1921, as the 836th club, and thus is celebrating its 100th anniversary. And whereas the club counts among its members Ames and Story County community leaders of business, the professions, education, and trades. And whereas the club has enhanced the quality of life for set communities by observing the Rotary motto, "Service Above Self," and has sponsored and supported numerous projects in these communities, including most recently the Rotary Club of Ames Miracle Field, located in the Ames Miracle Park, tree planting and care at Tedesco Environmental Lurin Corridor, and over $400,000 given to other local organizations in the last decade. And whereas the club is contributing to and supporting Rotary International's Polio Plus program to eradicate polio in developing countries and regions worldwide. And whereas the Rotary Club of Ames, Iowa, will officially celebrate its centennial anniversary with the theme "Beginning Our Second Century of Service, Virtually," on March 1, 2021, including the club's members, guests, and visiting dignitaries. Therefore, I, John A. Hala, Mayor of the City of Ames, Iowa, to hereby congratulate the Rotary Club of Ames on its 100th anniversary and commend it for its community service by declaring March 1, 2021, as Rotary Club of Ames Day. Chad, are you going to accept this virtually on behalf of Rotary?
Absolutely, but that's a tough act to follow. So my hat goes off to the three young men who have bravely served and helped rescue people, like you guys said. But we're grateful for the proclamation. Mayor Hala, thank you for dedicating March 1, 2021, as the Rotary Club of Ames Century Celebration Day. We are 180 members strong here in the community, people who value service above self, as you said, and continue to look for ways to serve globally with water delivery systems in Tanzania, Africa, right here from Ames, Iowa, also the polio eradication efforts and the fight against human slavery. And then locally, as you said, our support for the Miracle Field at the Miracle Park, as well as our local community grant projects that have been going on for quite some time. So we hope to gather in person in the fall to celebrate together. But we have been celebrating virtually together so far this year. And we thank you for the proclamation. And I would also be remiss if I didn't let you know that we still have openings available. So for those of the people that are listening who want to be a part of our club or learn more about it, please reach out to the Rotary Club of Ames. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. And thank you so much for all that you've done for our community. And that Miracle League Park is absolutely amazing. So I believe we're going to have a actual in-person dedication coming up this spring, I believe, sometime. So I'm hoping that we'll be able to see one in person at that point in time, too. So thank you very much. And we'll see too that you get an original of this proclamation in the very near future.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Okay, council, moving on to consent agenda. Just want to bring your attention that staff has asked to have item number 26, resolution approving contract and bonds for the 2021 pavement restoration slurry seal program to be pulled. The contract and bonds have not yet come in for, as required. So I would entertain, is council wish to pull anybody, any of the items from consent?
Mayor, I'd like to pull items 13, 14, and 15.
Okay, anything else? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion approving consent less items 13, 14, and 26.
And item 15.
I'm sorry, did I say that? 13, 14, 15, and 26, thank you.
So moved.
Would I, Garten?
Second.
Second, Cory Eri. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Thatcher?
Aye.
Garten?
Aye.
Junk?
Aye.
Cory Eri?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Rudy Hanson?
Aye.
Gloria?
Actually, we could probably deal with these as a set. I just wanted to make sure that we are operating under the understanding that if COVID precautions are in place at the time that these Main Street events occur, that we still have the ability to cancel the events based on city recommendation because of CDC guidance or whatever other information we might have. So that our approval tonight is contingent on the conditions, the health conditions at the time that the three events occur.
Brian, do you have any comment on that, or is that understood, or do we need to have that put into the motion?
No, I think we can communicate that to the organizers. I notice that John Hall has his hand raised, if you'd like to hear from him, Mayor.
Yes, no, we don't do that under consent, but given the fact that we're in unique times, I'll permit it tonight.
All right.
Yeah, muted, John.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Sorry, I didn't mean to throw off your rules on this either. I just wanted to chime in. Gloria, we absolutely hear the concerns that you're raising. Our intention is to operate with proper precautions on all of that. We were able to successfully hold art walk, music walk in the fall, if you remember, and intend to host those two events in that same way. As for 4th of July parade, we know that may end up being a long shot. We're very, very hopeful that we can host it in a more traditional fashion. But as we move towards that, we are going to be exploring some alternate options that may not entirely cancel the event, but may look to provide it in a virtual format or otherwise, so that we can continue to offer that to the citizens and community of Ames. So but we're acutely aware of that, and we'll continue to dialogue with city staff as we get closer to those dates to ensure that the situation's not changing. And if we need to come back to council to ensure that you guys are all comfortable with our plans to move forward, we certainly are happy to do so.
Any questions for John?
I appreciate what John said. But I think when we did the Velo approval and several other events, we made sure that it was council that could cancel the events and that was written into that initial approval that we would be the ones who pulled the plug or not on whether the events occurred. And I'm hoping that by the time these events occur, we are going to be able to do the safe events, just like last year, and maybe even add the 4th of July. But I would rather not have to have us come back to council to ensure that the events either occur or don't occur. I think so that's where I am right now. And I'm wondering if this is still part of the understanding as it was with previous events.
So, Brian?
Yes?
As submitted and as on the agenda right now, there is no provision officially in these approvals. Based on what Gloria has shared, what is your recommendation on how to proceed to make sure that what she was talking about, or is it addressed? Do you want to have them add a...
Well, you could. Go ahead.
I'll defer to you. Go ahead.
Yeah, you could approve it conditioned upon complying with whatever public health measures are in place at the time. Or the council could approve it. And then with the understanding that as each event approaches... approve it, um, and then, um, with the understanding that as each event approaches, perhaps the council would, um, or the council could ask, uh, for them to wait and approve it at a later time.
Gloria, what's your preference? You, you pulled these three items?
Uh, well, like I said, I would rather not have to come back to council, so I, I think the, the initial one that Brian mentioned, that, you know, everything needs to be in compliance with whatever, um, regulations are in force at the, the time of the event, which might mean if, you know, if there's a, a statewide, um, ban on gatherings of certain number of people, or if the city has decided that city property should not be used for gatherings, that that would automatically kick in, and, um, we would not have to come back to council for that, it would be done, dealt with administratively.
John, for planning purposes, John Hall for purposes, what kind of a advanced notice would that be? Because I, I think there's probably a lot of publication to go through and, uh, making arrangements.
Uh, Mayor, that's, that's, that's a fair question. All of our events will be planned with contingency plans, uh, so that in the event that, um, there are tighter restrictions to what we're planning, or no, or, or complete restrictions, complete lockdowns, we'll either have plans to, uh, shift the events, change the dates, or, uh, uh, cancel the events altogether. We'll, we'll go in with that knowledge and expectation, uh, for all of our events. We do appreciate getting the approvals tonight, though, so that we can start the marketing and, and begin building that with the, at least the, uh, expectation that at some level there's a possibility of moving forward with all of these, but, and, thank you.
All right.
So can we deal with these as, as a set for 13, 14, and 15?
Yes, now.
Then I would move that we approve the events with the added, um, note that these are contingent upon the, um, public health advisories and regulations that are in position at the time the events occur.
Okay, sir, second?
Just, just to clarify, I have to labor this, but it-
I'll ask her the second person to discuss it.
I'll second it.
Okay, Tim, thank you.
So, I mean, I appreciate, Gloria, your point, but is, aren't these events always subject to whatever the governor's proclamations are, or if there's a public health issue, we can always, uh, pull back?
I don't know, Tim, because it seems to me there are a lot of people who are doing things that aren't necessarily in line with the governor's proclamations, so I just want to make sure that the city property remains in line, and I don't, I trust that John and, and his team have worked out the contingency plans, and I really appreciate that, but I want, I want to be upfront about this, because I think, uh, that solves problems down the road if they emerge.
I have a question. In the motion, then, when you, um, said contingent upon public health advisories and regulations, that also includes any policy that the city council has adopted, correct?
Yes.
Great.
Everyone understand the motion? Those of the various say aye.
Aye.
May I pose nay? Motion carried, thank you. All right, we're going to public forum, this is a time we set aside for public comments on topics of city business, other than those listed on the agenda. Um, and, uh, we'd like to limit those to, uh, three minutes or less, so I'm going to open public forum. Brian, is anyone who's indicated interest, or watching describe how they can indicate interest, and then let's see if anyone has interest in addressing council under public forum.
Anybody who's interested in speaking at public forum, or later on any of the specific agenda items, can indicate so by raising their hand, uh, by pushing the raise hand button at the bottom center of their screen. If they're joining us by phone, they can press star nine, and we will get the same indication that they've raised their hand, and then I will call out the names in the order that they appear on the screen. And Mayor, I don't see anyone with their hand raised for public-
Thank you, Brian. We'll close public forum, moving on to item number 31, update on indoor aquatic center. Keith?
Hi, thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'm going to share my screen real quick. All right, did everybody see that?
Yes.
So, so just, uh, you know, we kind of laid out a lot of things in the council action forums, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time going through, you know, each of the individual items, but what I did want to do is just kind of give you a brief overview of what RDG, um, has come up with a, a couple of concepts, and then the, the cost estimates that they have associated with each option. Um, we do have Al Oberlander and Brad Rodenberg from RDG, um, they are in attendance, uh, with the meeting tonight, so if there are some questions specifically for either of those two, um, they will be available to answer questions, or if there's something that I can't answer. So what the, what we did is, we did have conversation with RDG, and, and just, uh, looked at the site, again, for people watching from home, uh, we do have Lincoln Way here along the, the bottom of the, the map, uh, we have North Oak on the, on the left, to the west side, North Elm on the right, and North Second to the, to the north, or to the top of the screen. What we want to do is make sure that we try to utilize the intersection at North Elm, uh, because it is a controlled intersection, and also the fact that, um, there is residential, um, to the west of this site. This site is owned by DOT right now, and they are looking to, to sell it in the future. Uh, but we'd want to try to keep people out of residential as much as possible. We also wanted to get views, um, as much as possible from Lincoln Way, so when people came by, um, they would be able to see into the, into the building and see what was happening, so probably a lot of glass, um, on the south edge. Uh, we also wanted to try to, again, get people into the, to the, um, the parking lot from North Elm, or from North Second. Um, so, so those are just a, a few things. There is a bus stop already there on Lincoln Way, um, so again, having people get off the bus and then get into the facility, um, quickly that way. So, uh, if we move on, so there are two options that, that, uh, RDG put together. So the first option that you see right there, and you can see in both of these options, the building is, uh, is situated kind of on the, the south, southwest corner of that property, parking to the north, 140 parking spaces, and in this, this is a one-level design, uh, and they're one-level option, 31, just over 31,000 gross square feet, and you can see also that, uh, that there is about, on the lot, about 30% green space, uh, as well. Uh, entrances to the parking lot and exits is what I mentioned, uh, in the previous slide. So on here, um, this is really just an aquatic center, and, and that's all that is, uh, included in this, um, in this plan. So you can see the, the blue area, uh, takes up most of the space. There are three components there, uh, to the right is the six-lane lap pool, 25 yard. We do have a zero-depth entry pool, um, and then a current channel also, and, and with that, uh, to the top of the screen, or top of the, um, the pool, that's the shallow, the zero-depth area, goes one foot, two foot, three feet, and then 42 inches in there. Um, this, uh, shallower end up here, uh, with the, the lap pool, and then we also do over here have the therapy pool. There are two slides, one larger slide goes outside, comes back in, and then a youth slide here as well. Um, one of the things, we do have equipment mechanical, we have some storage in three different areas, uh, we do have a women's restroom, or women's locker room, a men's locker room, and then in between here, um, this yellow in-between would be a hallway, and these are eight universal, or family change rooms, could be used, uh, by families, um, anybody, uh, gender identity, transgender, uh, these could be available for anybody to, to use, and then they come out onto the, to the deck. Uh, we do have the main entrance coming off of the parking lot, control desk, and then over here on the right side, we do have, um, a party room, classroom, could be used for staff training, could be rented for, for small, uh, meetings as well. So again, 31,300 square feet, uh, this does come with, uh, with a price tag of about $22.8 million. Um, one of the things also, uh, this green space right here, uh, could be used for expansion in the future, or another option would be going to the north of the building, over the parking lot, you would have to, to put some pillars in the parking lot, um, you know, create kind of a second floor, and you could, um, expand that way. One of the issues with this site is, if you do expand, whether it's to the east or to the north, um, parking will start becoming a, a problem. We won't have enough parking, and that was one of the concerns from the, the neighborhood. Uh, when we had a meeting with them, is parking spilling over into the, into the residential. Uh, one of the other issues they had was, uh, you know, just the traffic on Second Street, uh, they felt a lot of people would be coming into, um, to the site off of Second Street, or exiting, um, the, the building from Second Street as well. So, so that, uh, that's, uh, option one, one, one-level aquatic center, and that was what the city council had directed staff to, to look at. Um, option two, this is a little larger footprint, about 800 square feet, for a total of 32,100 square feet. Um, the design is basically the same, uh, the extra square footage on this first floor comes by putting a, a stairway in here, also an elevator. I should note that on the first floor of both of these options, there are two restrooms, those are gender-neutral restrooms, and, um, so that's pretty much the, the same, uh, the same floor plan, just a little bit bigger because of the stairway and the, uh, and the elevator. So this one does have a, a second floor. We did, as staff, discuss, you know, if we wanted to, to go a little bit, uh, bigger, and we did want to go to a, a second floor, uh, what could we put up there? Um, the, the walking area, it is something that we get questions about, um, where can people walk? Uh, this right here does go around the outside, and, and it's, uh, nine and a half laps per mile on that walking area. Um, one thing, we do have the stairway coming up, you have your elevator, two, uh, gender-neutral restrooms, kind of a, a lobby, not really lobby, social area for people waiting for class or coming out, um, sometimes children are in the class, it's an area for parents to, to sit, uh, but then we have 2,000 square feet of multipurpose space, um, we do have a divider in there, could be one large room, could be, uh, two smaller rooms, do have some storage, and then have, uh, some data and custodial closet as, as well. So this option, with the, the, the two floors, um, with 11,600 square feet on the second floor, uh, this one is about 27.5 million is, is what the price tag on, on this one is. So, so this is just a, a summary of the, the two options. So option one, again, a one-level, uh, aquatic center on your left, and then on the right is a two-level, you know, with that walking area and multipurpose up on the second floor. You can see the, the cost difference, um, does have the, you know, the building construction, um, site utilities, this does include $2 million for purchase price of the DOT property. It also includes, uh, just over $400,000 for demolition of the buildings, uh, and, uh, the site as well. Uh, there is FFNE, uh, design fees, there's, uh, some other soft cost, soil, survey testing, et cetera, and a contingency of 15%. In both of these options, uh, stormwater, you can see item number four, $516,000, that is subsurface, um, stormwater, uh, management, and, and below, you do see, you know, several alternates, and if you did want to use the, the southeast corner of the property for stormwater, you could deduct $350,000, um, and there are some other options there with, uh, with, uh, stormwater management, water retention, uh, as well. You know, one of the things, item number five, on your left-hand side with the one level, is, is if you wanted to, uh, expand to the second floor and put what you see in option two, uh, on later, uh, then you would need to add about $500,000 onto, to the cost for option one, just to, to increase, you know, the structure and footings and so on, to be able to accommodate a second floor later on. If you look at the, the two-level option, again, some of the same stormwater, you know, options, uh, as well, and some of the alternates, but if you look at option number five, if you were to shorten the walking track at the second level, and I'll just go back to that if on this design, and when you come around here from the, the west going south, and you start heading east, instead of going south again, if you just kept that, uh, walking area right here, um, so it'd be much shorter, just a rectangle, uh, if you did that, you could cut, uh, 1.5 million from, from that design, that would take this walking track from about nine and a half laps to, um, about, uh, you know, probably the neighborhood of almost 20 laps, you know, per mile. Uh, now, the reason for, you know, this, when you get out over here in the pool area, um, pretty much this walking area, um, really you're kind of creating a glass corridor, and, and because of the humidity, um, the, with the, um, the air from the aquatics, um, area down below, you do have to kind of create a corridor, which would be much more comfortable for people to, to walk. So, um, so with this also, just, uh, really quickly mentioned, did, uh, share in the council action forum, you did see comments from, uh, neighborhood meeting that we had, um, generally the comments were positive about, uh, an aquatic center needed in the community, people liked it in the neighborhood, uh, being close to it, uh, but traffic, parking, and, uh, stormwater, and then also, uh, some comments about affordability. Uh, right now, we have, uh, you know, not, uh, done any in-depth look at operational expenses, or what the cost of daily admissions or passes will be. Um, so what we did do, and it's, uh, laid out in the, uh, council action forum, is what we did is, because this, uh, the base of this design was basically the aquatics portion of the Healthy Life Center, what we did is, we just, uh, you know, showed you again what the aquatics portion, the tax subsidy would be from the Healthy Life Center, which is, uh, you know, just over about $400,000, so, uh, so with that said, there are, uh, you know, three alternatives in the council action forum, uh, but before we get to those, I guess I would just, uh, um, ask if there are any questions, or, you know, Steve, if you want to add anything into this before council asks questions?
No, except- I'll jump in. I, um, when I looked at this initially, I couldn't figure out where the slide was, could you, and you were kind enough to walk me through that, could you explain for people where the two slide features are?
Sure, sure. So, so if you look in, uh, in the southwest, in the lower-left corner here, we have two slides, one, um, right kind of at the, the base here, there is a stairway that goes up to the top, and then this, uh, you, you get into the slide, it's a tube, or not a tube slide, it's a potty slide, um, you would go down, you'd go back outside, and then you'd come around, and then you'd enter what we call a runout, which is just a very shallow, um, water area, so you come down, you hit that water, um, it stops you, and then you just get up, walk out of that runout. Um, just above that, right here, uh, between this slide and the, um, the therapy pool, we do have a youth slide, and again, right here, there's a little stairway, it would take you up to the top, you might be, uh, about 10 feet off the ground, and then what there is, uh, right now is what's being proposed, is actually three different slides, and each one of those three slides would be a little different. One might be just straight down, another one might be a little wavy, one might just have one hump, uh, and down, but again, you would go into the, uh, runout as well, and then, uh, the kids would just, uh, stand up and walk out of that runout.
Keith or Steve? Keith or Steve, uh, for those that may not be aware, who might be watching or listening, he is clarifying, as you indicated in the background in the, uh, council, um, uh, action forum, you know, why we're going through this process, and just get a little bit of background.
Yeah, if recall, we're doing this, we're trying to take advantage of the major development along Lincoln Way between Clark and Kellogg, and take advantage of a state program, which is the, um, uh, reinvestment districts that allowed, uh, us to capture the state tax on hotels and retail sales to be used for, uh, certain projects that better the community. So-
So we are trying to put together a package, an application that's due in February twenty-second that would actually allow us to capture the that state hotel motel tax and retail for the developments going to be proposed on Lincoln Way between Kellogg and Clark and use that to help pay for this aquatics facility. Our our goal then is to use that revenue plus donations or non-city revenue from other sources, along with our Gita Whitaker money we have in place to help finance this total facility. So which option you choose is very important because it sets the bar on the amount of revenue we have to collect either from donations or from the developer development itself. And we haven't seen the final, or we're we have to be in discussions with the developer. I know they're exploring a number of options. So in a very short period of time, we have to review which ones they want to promote. And then we have to do an economic analysis. We have a consultant ready who's worked with these applications before to determine how much of these taxes will be generated to justify if we can pay off this particular project within twenty years. So it's very crucial, it's a crucial, because the city will have to upfront the general obligation bonds for this facility, whether you pick the twenty-seven point five or you pick the twenty twenty-two point eight, and then plan on paying the principal interest payments with those revenues. If we're short, then the taxpayer will have to pay for that. And that'll be a separate strategy and decision you'll have to make. So if you look at the different options we have before you, it's very difficult for us. The real charge was for with us is to get an aquatics facility, a recreation, a fun amenity we can have during the winter and even summer months for our families and recreation too. So that's the first floor one. That's the twenty-two point twenty-two point eight million dollars, which remember, that's in two thousand and twenty-two numbers, which probably we wouldn't start any earlier than that construction. And it's certainly in keeping what we thought was going to be the cost of the Healthy Life Center component. These have all the features there on the first floor. And at that time, we projected if we built a facility by ourselves, it'd be about nineteen million dollars. The reason this is a little higher is the Healthy Life Center was not going to cost us anything for land acquisition, nor would not have any major site preparation costs. So if you add that two point five million dollars onto that, we're close to that in twenty-two dollars right now with the twenty-two point eight million dollar budget. So we then thought, well, what can we get at this site? And remember, this is a very small site. It's pretty condensed. What if we added some of the features that would make this more than an aquatic center? Because not everybody wants to swim, but maybe there's some recreation amenities we can offer in the winter months. So remember, it's we're constrained by open space requirements, landscaping requirements and parking. So we thought of the walking area plus maybe a all purpose, a multipurpose room where we can have some classes up there for more aerobic type activities. And we wanted to find out what would be cost to add that. Well, as you can see, the incremental cost of adding that is about four point four point seven million dollars if we use the large track. If we if we reduce that by one point five million, we're about three point two million. It seems to us that's a lot of money, extra money for those two new features, that perhaps that can be captured in another facility that's going to be needed in the future. We're going to have to recommend for additional gymnasiums and recreation space. So we also looked at, is it possible to put even more there? Can we put gymnasiums on there? And we talked with Al about extending a floor, the second floor over the parking lot. But we have problems because we just, with that kind of activity, now you're generating a lot more people and the parking lot just won't handle it. Now, we don't have any, we have uncertainty whether we'll be able to purchase land around there right now or what the cost will be. That's pretty expensive land around there. So all this led to us to 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 recommend to you to stick with our original recommendation of the aquatic center itself, which would be twenty-three, oh, twenty-two point eight million dollars. Again, this doesn't, this doesn't mean that we don't need other recreation facilities in the future. We just think it may be more cost effective to put it in another building in con- in conjunction with gymnasiums perhaps.
Thanks, Steve. I have a question kind of related to that. One of the additions to option one is the five hundred thousand to add the footings for a potential second story later on. Would those, would that be enough to also, I mean, is it just a second story that that gets us to, or are those sorts of footings the kind that would also allow you to have a third story eventually, or?
Hey, I I think we talked about just a second story, but Al is on here. Al, do you want to address that that question?
Yeah, that particular number is established by just adding a second floor. So the structure, the footings are updated, the structural columns are updated so they can be expanded. Instead of a roof construction at the top of that right now, it would be put in as a concrete slab so that the roof could be peeled off in the future and you could just start to extend on up from there. It could, you could add a third story, but we would need to increase that particular number because we'd have to size all those for that additional floor.
Great.
Our concern would be, with insufficient parking, people will be spilling over into neighborhoods, which was a concern of the neighborhoods. And.
Yeah, but I was just thinking, if you didn't go over your parking lot, you could go up there too, but maybe not. But if we were able to buy properties, you know, in the neighborhood later on or something like that, that would free up a second story to be a possibility. So just that I like, I like having that potential for that in the future. It's an, that's an interesting thought, so. And then my other question is, you know, I know it's silly, we have a tendency to raise things and rebuild, but was there any thought given to using parts of the existing building for a a piece of the facility, like the changing rooms in, you know, anything like that? Or is that, is that something we, that you ever?
You know, we really didn't have a a lot of conversation with that. One reason is when you're, if you look at where the the current building is sitting, or not the, on the current building versus what we were proposing, we need a lot of that parking to the to the north. And then when you look at where the the current building is, we really had to configure things a lot that is an older building and sometimes trying to to make that fit into what we're doing, it just isn't a good option. And I know if Al, if you want to add anything to that.
Yeah, we didn't spend a lot of time looking at that. I think part of it was just the placement of the existing building and kind of the condition of the existing building, given the fact that that building not accommodate the aquatics component, it would not accommodate the pools that we're looking at. You would have to put the support spaces in there, the locker rooms. And then we'd be totally tearing up the entire floor slab in order to do that. So there probably wouldn't be a significant cost savings by trying to start to convert that into locker rooms. We would probably, it would result in some inefficiencies, maybe with some additional corridors that we would need in order to get to some of those spaces. What we did talk about though is because that building does have a basement underneath it right now, so there is a hole there. And one of the things, because we were including stormwater detention underneath our parking lot, normally you'd have to excavate a bunch of dirt out in order to put that underneath the parking lot. Here, we've already got a hole there. So our stormwater detention system could go on a series of pipes in that basement area right now, fill it back in and then put our parking lot over it. So we were trying to capture some of the space where that building had been situated.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
Al, a question for you is if they went, if council decided to go with the first option and then in the future, we want to head, put a second floor on. Can you, can you talk about what kind of disruption to the operation of the aquatic center might occur while that construction is going on, in particular over the the pool basins when you're doing the the walking track and just in general?
Yeah, excellent question. Two parts of that. So if we were going to add a second floor above the locker rooms and where some of the offices are, the process that we would have to go through in order to do that, we would have to come in, we would have to knock holes in the floor in order to add new footings to support new columns. So we would come into those spaces and select areas, knock these floor holes in the floor, put in new footings, put in columns then that would go up through existing spaces, some in the locker rooms possibly, some maybe in some corridors. And they would extend up through the roof basically to support a second floor. Some of those areas, we would probably then also need to take the roof off of in order to convert what had been a roof structure into a floor structure to support the area up above. In the pool, what we would need to do is we would have to come in and reinforce our existing long span steel trusses that span across that pool so that they could accommodate an additional weight of this jogging track that would be suspended over that. So we'd have to shut the pool down for a period of time to come in to strengthen those trusses, to build the jogging track, put the glass in around it, put the ductwork in because it has to be conditioned differently than an auditorium does. So it would be very disrupt disruptive to your day-to-day operations while that would be going on, and it would be very expensive to come back after the fact and try and add that second floor.
Now, I know the council's concerned about building it so we can expand. Al, if we do the underground stormwater, then we don't need this green space to the east. Do you remember we talked about how many square feet we could put on to the east if we want to add gymnasiums or other rooms there? Do you remember? You drew some little rectangle there.
Yeah, to the east, we could put, if we did a one story, it'd be about fifteen thousand square feet of space. If we did two stories, you could start to have fifteen thousand per floor. So you could add thirty thousand square feet of space to the east of this in a two-story configuration.
Connect the building somehow.
Yep. And again, the big challenge is just what do we do with parking at that point? Do we take the north parking lot and do we start to add a second level of parking? Which you could do out there, but certainly is a costly thing to do.
Would that also cause some issues with our thirty percent green space?
Yes. Right now, we're at thirty percent. But Brad, my recollection was we needed to be at fifteen percent. So we've got more green space than we needed by city ordinance right now. So that's where we were taking some of that green space in order to put in this this building addition.
Other questions for Keith or Al?
It seems like the adding the walking path would significantly increase the number of people who would benefit from this. You know, Ada Hayden is packed throughout the week and the, when the weather permits. And now there's no place for people to go walking except for the mall. If we were to use the smaller walking track, I mean, you'd be feeling like you're walking in circles. And so I'm leaning pretty strongly towards the second floor with the the full walking path. I think the cost of this is only going to get more expensive to to do this kind of facility as we go on. So I think it's a good timing issue. I want to appreciate too, Al, when you designed this, in the in the current layout, the DOT has a curb cut on the west side. So the neighbors should appreciate the fact that we're we're eliminating a curb cut on the west side of the block. And so access will come in on the north and the east. And I think that'll make things nicer for the neighborhood to the west. I also think just from a macro level, if you look at this on a map, we're looking at this just on this block, but if you zoom out, remember too, this is an important block in the corridor on Lincoln Way. And as we're making, we're going to see major changes on the Lincoln Way corridor in the next few years. I am so excited about the possibility of adding a really attractive amenity that would be a part of that larger corridor. So I appreciate the fact that the staff approached this from the direction we gave them and looked at just the pool. But I think that the option of the walking track significantly serves a much larger portion of our population. And I think people who bring their kids or grandkids will take advantage of that opportunity to get a little walking in as well. So I think it's just a tremendously well-designed building. Thanks.
Al, Keith or Steve, may you comment on this too? One of the things that we understood from the report was the DOT may not want to be, may not want to vacate their premises right away. So Al, could this building be built concurrent with the existing building remaining in service for the DOT and that at a point in time, hopefully before it was finished, parking and stormwater could be taken care of? Or can you, can you comment on that?
The building is located at a position on the site where the existing two buildings could remain and all three of those buildings. So what we'd be displacing though is we'd be taking out half of the parking lot that's already there. So it it might be a situation where during construction, maybe you could do that. I think once it's open and you've got people still using the DOT building and trying to come to a new aquatics facility. There'd be a significant parking shortage, but certainly during construction, that might be a way to accommodate both these on the site.
Just trying to be cognizant of the fact that what you're using now for inflation, but given a project of this size, if you had to postpone this for two or three years for construction, what would you plug in for inflation factor per year? What would you recommend? I mean, if you had to lay it for two or three years until they vacated the site, how much would that add to the project cost?
Yeah, we would recommend probably four percent per year if you were going to take it out beyond twenty-two into twenty-three or twenty-four.
So you could be easily going up eight to twelve percent if you're going to delay it for two or three years, which would be another.
Yes.
Two, three million dollars easily. So I think that some of the solution that would allow, if that's what the DOT requires still having access to that site or their buildings, to have the solution, which you come up with, appears to be able to accomplish both objectives. Other questions for Al, Steve or Keith tonight?
I have a question for Steve regarding the reinvestment district. If we were to opt to submit the plan for the two-story aquatic center with the reinvestment district, and then it was voted down by a referendum, because as I understand it, we're going to have to have a referendum, or it's probably wise to have a referendum if we go with the more expensive property. Does that mean that the project is then dead in the water and we can't revert back to a one-story plan? Or can we say, oh, well, the two-story failed, we'll go with the one-story?
I don't think that will have a significant, well, I don't want to speak for that. I just know that your your first question is, if we have to submit this application with a contingent of a passing of bond issue, then I don't know if we'll get all the points we need, first of all, that it's it's shovel-ready, if you will. I think we might be able to, but it's not guaranteed. If everybody else has all their land locked up and they're ready to go, I don't know how they'll put us in a competitive, you know, competitive light with with the other I think the majority of the building will be the aquatic center, what we're pushing for. So really, if we ever had to cut out something, it's probably only the walking track and one room. So I'm not sure that would disqualify us. I just don't know. I just don't know. One thing you've got to do is, whatever you do here, you're setting the expenditure side of this. On the ninth, I've got to show you the revenue side because I don't even know what the gap is right now. That's why we're hiring a consultant to tell us. So that's going to be very enlightening. Or you're going to say, no matter what the gap is, and you might do this. Um, or you're going to say, no matter what the gap is, and you might do this, we're going to take it to a bond election. But, um, it doesn't put it as a favorable lighter competitive, I think, if it's conditional. Um, but I still think it might be a track enough project that will get through the first, the first round. We'll have to see. I can't guarantee you. Um, I don't think the state, there's a lot of things that we're going to, we're going to emphasize about this project. It's, it has a number of aspects, including the, we're claiming this is all part of, uh, the resurgence of the downtown and that'll include the plaza of which we're paying a hundred percent for. It's also the redevelopment, which brings a lot of, along Lincoln Way, which brings a lot of positive factors. And of course, the pool's one element of it. So I'm not sure if we cut it by eleven thousand square feet. That's all we would be on that second floor, whatever it is, fourteen thousand, that that would disqualify us. Um, they may give us less money. They may give us less money, but I'm not sure that'll happen either. We just don't know.
Yeah, I mean, in my experience working with the Iowa Department of Economic Development, um, you know, we work with them on the Miracle Park Grant and I sat in on a number of those presentations. They're, when they like a project, and I think what is there to not like about what we're doing here? They're always willing to work with communities and they're very flexible in, um, understanding that there may be changes to the project. Um, I know other projects have submitted applications when there's been bond referendums, um, that have influenced it. So, you know, I, I think that we need to continue to be excited and, and advocate for this project as much as we possibly can, rather than looking at, you know, what the potential downfalls may be or what may happen that might be negative. Because I do think, um, like I said, there, there's really nothing to not like about this. And I think the state will love it and they will want us to succeed just as much as we do.
Here's the challenge. The challenge isn't going to be as much as the state. It's we, whatever you put up for a referendum, if it doesn't pass, we don't have a project, right? Because we don't have the money to fill the gap. Our analysis will show we're short. So that's the risk you have when you, uh, submit it to a bond vote. Whether it's twenty-two point eight million or it's twenty-seven, the project probably can't proceed if you don't have, you don't have the money for the gap. Because the financial analysis will show to the state it probably won't work. Now, you have to understand by state law, you don't necessarily have to take this to referendum. If it's an urban renewal project, it's the first time we bring it towards you, it's subject to a reverse referendum, which means if a certain number of, uh, signatures are gained on a petition, they can, uh, that will force an election. But if there is not a petition submitted, then the council can actually issue bonds at whatever amount, uh, to pay, uh, for the gap. So it's really going to be a political decision whether you want to, uh, require a bond referendum or just wait to see if there's a reverse, reverse referendum that requires you to do it. But I think we'll have a problem if we have a gap of six million dollars or seven million dollars or ten million that we say we're going to finance it with a bond issue. What do you do with a bond issue fails? That's where your challenge is going to be. It's not that the state won't allow us, want us to keep going. It's just they won't, it won't pencil out for them.
Any other questions? Very none. We'll go ahead and open up, uh, public, uh, comment. Brian, is there anybody who wishes to address counsel and offer, uh, comment this evening on this particular topic?
Mayor, I see a hand raised from Adiv Bamini. Tyler, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Um, so my name is Adiv. I, I was at the neighborhood meeting as well. Our family lives on North Second Street. You can kind of almost see our house in that area right there, actually. Um, so yeah, I guess I just wanted to share that, yeah, we would really love to have this pool in our neighborhood. And I, um, you know, I shared at the other meeting, um, some of the possible concerns just to, just to think about. But, uh, obviously it's a complex project and we appreciate the complexities. And, um, given the money issue, I just, I, I just wanted to, uh, comment. I'm not sure if it's possible even to, uh, try to have the, um, you know, try to put it to a vote. And then if it doesn't pass, you know, go back to the other method of, of the cheaper version, maybe where you don't have to get the, that extra money. I don't know if that's a possibility. I guess my, my thought, just to share is that we really love to have this and we don't want it to fail. You know, we'd really love to have this pool and, um, if it even means having a smaller, um, version, then fine. Um, but I do agree that it'd be great to have a walking path. It'd be great to have those extra features. Um, but we just want to make sure it succeeds. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Adiv, could you just give us your, uh, your address? I'm sorry, I should have asked that for the record, please. Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Mayor, I do not see anyone else with their hand raised.
Very good. We'll close public comment and counsel for the comments, questions? And/or I would, uh, entertain a motion on the direction to staff. There are three alternatives presented, um, in the council action forum. They could build off of that or use one of those if you so desire.
We have another option, mayor. We could wait until the ninth meeting to give direction. We talked to Al about that and you can decide then when you see the revenue side of this equation. And he will scramble and put together, he's got the, actually the floor plans for both options. You pick, he'll just have to then have, take a few days to give us, uh, a rendering of the elevations to submit in our application. Because we'll submit our application in February, uh, February, uh, it doesn't have to be the twenty-second, but we'll try to beat that by a couple of days. So I just think you ought to see both sides of the equation right now. Uh, how much is that gap? And then you can make an informed decision. I don't know what it is yet. We have to get with the developer, see what he's willing to build and then put it through our, with our consultant, to see what it could generate in qualifying revenue. And then also see how much, uh, commitment we have in the way of signed pledges, if you will, at this time on what people are going to give to the project. Then the gap will, we'll see. I'm, I'm expecting a gap even with a smaller project, to be honest with you, but we'll have to see.
Steve, what would the downside be? Could you clarify? Because we're going to have to do this work regardless. Um, I'm prepared to move option two, but, um, help us understand from your perspective with their, what the, the merits would be of waiting as opposed to doing option two. I'm still a little bit fuzzy on this.
Just if you wanted the full information and know what the projected gap is that concerns anybody? Whether it's a ten million dollar bond issue, uh, fifteen million dollar bond issue or a four million dollar bond issue. That may affect which one you do because if we don't pass the bond issue and there's a gap, that jeopardizes the project.
Thank you for bringing that option up, Steve. And I actually, um, in conversation, um, before the meeting with one of the council members, they had a good point. This is the first time the public has actually seen.
Right.
The, uh, information, the schemes, um, as compared to the next item on the agenda, which is the plaza, which has been more, became more public. And so, um, maybe to table any kind of direction. Let me understand RDG can, uh, comply or meet the deadlines for the renderings that are necessary because other things. If a decision is done on February ninth, that would allow public to, you know, to see and also hear the, uh, the update, read the update on the, uh, the costs, getting input before a decision is made, which way to go. Uh, again, this is just for submission to the application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority. This is not, we're going to go ahead and build it and go to the bond issue. We just, so we're very clear to the public. And that's why for the short timeline is that this opportunity came up a few months ago. And ID, our IDDA requires a specific project with plans, with some elevations, some cost opinions. They want to see it as viable and our staff need to work with numbers. So, uh, if it looks like it's almost finished, that is not, not correct. But the point is we have to go to this level of detail, uh, in order to, uh, submit the application. Um, and so I just want to ensure people that, uh, this isn't the last time it's going to be before, um, counsel for, uh, for the conversation, um, and the ultimate decision. Um, but we do need to keep this thing moving. So, counsel, let's, I, go ahead.
Keith, uh, could you walk us through what, what have you done already to, um, let the public know about this proposal? I know there was a one public session. What, what has been done so far for outreach?
So, so we had, we've had two things thus far. The first one is we did have a, a neighborhood meeting. Um, we sent out five hundred letters to, to everybody in the Oak to Riverside neighborhood. Uh, we had fifteen people attend that meeting and give input, which was shared with, uh, in that part of the council action forum. The, the second thing that we did is last week, Thursday, Parks and Recreation Commission had a meeting. And what we had done is we had sent, um, information out. We posted it on our Facebook page. We also sent it out to the six thousand email addresses, um, that we have in our, in our database. Um, and we actually sent that not only for the, the aquatic center, but also for the downtown plaza. So, so that's where we sent that out. We had about five people that, uh, that attended the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting and only had one individual speak. So, so we have sent out, um, a, a number of, um, I guess notices to a number of people. Uh, we just have not had a lot of, of response to, to anything that we had sent out, um, to, to this point. And, and even with, uh, with tonight, you know, we've, uh, you know, let people know that, uh, it was going to be on the agenda for, um, tonight's meeting. And, and again, there's just not generating a lot of, of input.
I, I appreciate very much. I had no idea that you had that kind of public outreach already. Uh, six thousand emails, five hundred letters and Facebook posts. Um, I mean, I'll just try this. I'm going to move alternative two.
I can.
Okay, move to second alternative two.
So I have concerns about that, um, because I would like to see those numbers and, and where we stand if it's possible for RDG to, uh, actually do the schematics or the renderings of, of what we might see. So I, I, I don't think I would support this right now because I'm more inclined to say, let's see it on the ninth and table it now.
Just for clarification, Gloria?
We, I know we wouldn't have the plans on the ninth.
We wouldn't have the pictures. You would, you would decide which one you want. He will scramble to get the.
Right.
Picture. You have the floor plans, but not the exterior.
No, I, what I meant was that as long as RDG can complete the plans in time for, is it February twenty-second that the, the grant deadline is? Um, I would prefer to wait.
Other comments?
I, I think I agree that I would prefer to wait. I would really rather see the two-story building. And I, and I agree with Tim and Amber's comments about how, you know, we really should, should try to serve everyone in the community. This is a, an opportunity that will only get harder the longer we wait. But, um, there are so many moving pieces here that it seems like if we have an opportunity to, to at least have a better idea of how the revenue stack up against the expenses and what sort of bond measure we might have to be looking at. I, I think that's, we might as well have that information at hand when we make this decision to go forward.
Any other comments?
What I'm also hearing is that, uh, if the motion does not pass, it's not negating, there's not support for a two-story. Well, as you're pretty much sure to make a decision, um, at this time.
All right. That's why, I mean, just one final pitch to this. I, I think we have a good sense that this is a project that we want. I think the community will support it. In fact, I think that you're going to have a much higher, uh, basis of support if we increase the desirability of the building. I mean, there are a lot of people who just don't swim. And, but if we add the, the walking path now, that's a game changer in terms of making the building more attractive. Um, I think this is a visionary project. I think we need to throw deep and I like this, I like option two.
All right. Everyone understand the motion? Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, just for the record, just believe it's Fletcher and Martin voted no. If anyone else voted no? Okay. Motion carried four-two. Very good. Anything else, Keith, Steve or Al that you wish to add before we, uh, move on to the next item?
So, so just, uh, the, I guess to be clear, so we can move forward with the, the renderings of a two-level, uh, building and bring those to, to show on the ninth along with all the financial information. Correct?
Just if I understand the motion, would they have to go ahead and move forward? Is that correct? Tim?
Yeah.
Yep, all right. Very good.
Mayor and city council.
Thanks, Keith. Thanks, Al, for coming tonight.
You bet. Thank you.
All right. Let's move on to item number thirty-two, update on downtown plaza. Kelly?
Yes, the unmute button, of course. So what we have up on our screen tonight is the contextual location map for the downtown plaza across from City Hall. And this was really important as we started out this project. Uh, the number one goal for this project is to enhance downtown and to have a connection to Main Street and then be that amenity to everyone in the city that comes downtown. So this was pretty important to look at and how we can relate back to the main street of, of downtown. And what we really focused on here was the long-term evolution of downtown. Using Fifth Street and Burnett as a corridor that could be improved over time through both city improvements as well as potential redevelopment in this area. There's not necessarily redevelopment planned right now for this, but we want to set a vision and the ability to look at these linkages over time. And as we move into the discussion of the plaza, it really shaped how we thought of the interface with the plaza as the front of the plaza being Fifth Street, which at first may not have seemed obvious because you would have said, well, the front door of City Hall is the, is the civic place that you're looking at. And we respected that as well in the design, but really using Fifth Street as the gateway to downtown is what really kind of started off the whole design concept that we're going to show you tonight. Another thing I want to point out, wherever on this map, just to the northwest of City Hall on Sixth Street, we have a site that, that we're going to recommend that the city council look at acquiring. Uh, we have ownership of the property now through the CDVG program. And we have already decided as part of the annual action plan to sell that property and use those funds to support affordable housing on three twenty-one State Avenue. And what we're recommending that's different is that the city possibly acquire this rather than put it out for, uh, on the open market as, as a for-sale property. It will allow us to add some parking as a parking lot to facilitate additional needs in the downtown area, which would, would happen if we replace Lot N with this plaza. So as we look at the plaza design itself, city council outlined a number of ideas for us to consider. Uh, Confluence really took that to heart and looked at a lot of different ideas with, with the city team. And we went through a number of iterations before we kind of came to this compilation that you see tonight that addresses a, a really a large range of issues and still makes it kind of a comfortable place. It's very diverse in its features and, and we think it really can accomplish all of our goals that we have in front of us. It includes, uh, the main activity space that is, that is hardscaped, allows for the ice skating facility to be there in the winter. It has a more secluded area to the north, uh, for seating areas, interactive play areas, public art installations. And what we're finding is probably the main feature of this site is really going to be how water intertwines the pieces together with this flowing kind of channel or, um, open ponds kind of concept rather than just a spray pad. There will be some kind of spray pad component that is at the end of the area, but it's going to be water in more than one part of the site, which we think will be really fun and engaging for a lot of different people. Some of the other more interesting parts are the design at the south. Uh, again, embracing Fifth Street is our commercial frontage. We, we have the idea that we can fit, uh, either pop-up retail or food trucks into that area on a temporary basis. Allows people to, to be there basically at any time of the day. Even if the plaza is not being used, the public might be interested in, in going to a food truck on Fifth Street and not have that empty feeling of being isolated in the middle of a plaza and still being engaged with the commercial street on Fifth Street. So with this design, we also addressed parking. Lot N is a large parking lot for us. It has 86 parking spaces in it. In the staff report, we break down how those spaces are used right now. So the main strategy for parking is to look at adding angled parking on Clark Street. This would kind of be your front door customer parking. It's meant to be short-term parking, really oriented to serving people that are visiting City Hall. We'd also keep parking on Fifth Street. And then, as I mentioned, we think we can provide some additional long-term parking through the acquisition and use of that property on Sixth Street. As part of this concept process, we have Confluence designing renderings for us. As you already know, this is going to be a component of the reinvestment district application. This is that local commitment of infrastructure investment, kind of a local match that goes into this reinvestment district application. So we wanted to really show the seasonality of the site. Confluence is able to depict for us both a summer and a winter version of the plan. What you see right now is that winter version. And this one shows one of the two options of ice skating facilities that we're still evaluating. We have this larger sheet of ice that's kind of in this figure eight kind of outline. But another thing that we're looking at, which is really interesting and kind of unique, at least for Iowa at this point, would be what we call the ribbon ice skating, which would mean more of a path that's about 15 feet wide or so and it kind of winds through the site. And it's the social kind of recreational skating. It's not a full sheet of ice. Interesting enough, when we did the public meeting last week, the ribbon ice version that was shown was actually the more popular choice over the one that we've seen in this drawing. So these drawings are all conceptual at this point. We're really trying to depict the character of the area and the wide range of features that have been discussed. A lot of details left to come as we move forward in the design. The summer depiction really helps you understand the relationships of the site as well for how we have different open areas, a little platform or a stage for performances, the food truck concept, the building for support uses and restrooms, and then some of the other decorative features that are in the concept. And then we have two other views. We have kind of the in-person view at ground level, trying to again understand the skating rink component and that building and food truck to the south. Then the summer view, you can see how you have an open plaza. Would probably have some artificial turf component. Again, we would have water that's incorporated into this area as well to keep it active and engaging all year long. So with what I mentioned earlier is in terms of public outreach, we did have an unveiling of sorts for the community last Thursday night. We had advertised that in a variety of places. We estimate about 90 people participated either actively in the Zoom meeting that we held or through online viewing or Channel 12 viewing on YouTube or Facebook Live. So we're pretty happy with that turnout. And as just beginning the outreach process, we didn't really give you a full sense of the comments we received. But so far, the things we have heard through the Facebook posts and other written comments we received and tried to identify some of the positives and negatives that we've heard from people, there's concerns about parking, really how the location works, potentially the cost of the project. And other people are very enthusiastic about it, embracing the ice skating facility, the idea of the green space that's here and a lot of the elements that are in there. And what we're doing for comments right now is on our website, we have put up a survey tool and a comment tool. And as we get more feedback over the next week and a half, we'll bring that back to City Council and see a kind of a more robust picture of comment on this over a two-week period. Just in the five days that we've had this stuff, we've already had 158 people give us comments since Friday last week. So it's definitely a hot topic and an interesting subject matter to those people that we've been kind of blasting this out through social media and our other advertisements. That's what we're looking for from council tonight. This is really, again, an update on the concept. We're really seeing if we've hit the mark on what council's ideas were. Are we missing things? Do you have concerns about features that are shown or not shown in the project? We don't have final cost estimates yet. That's the next step before February 9th. And really, again, this is, there is a little bit of a rush, but this is a really important and significant project for the city. It won't be a rush to final completion. It's really just a rush to get this initial application for the reinvestment district done. There's a lot of details that would love to be decided as we move towards final designing construction detail later this spring if City Council moves forward with this. So with that, I'm available for questions. And Keith is also still here for us.
Questions or comments for Kelly or Keith?
Kelly, one of the things that I mentioned when we had our discussion about this plan earlier was the potential to have technology-charging solar stations in tables so that people who are living downtown or working downtown can go and take their laptops to this area. Is that somewhere in this plan? Everything looks kind of impermanent to me. And I think those things are hard-wired, but I could be wrong about that. I haven't looked too closely at the ones out at Tedesco.
But I would say that that level of detail is not in the plan. But what you are seeing in that main hardscape area, a lot of that would be movable chairs and benches. That doesn't mean they're all permanent facilities in other parts of the layout. So maybe the seating area is north or something like that. But the idea of the open space, that main core area, whether it's possible to meet a lot of needs and not necessarily have the expertise. It's not that it's not in there, but I also am not seeing it as in there because that detail is not fully let out.
I think I caught what you said, Kelly, but you're kind of breaking up. So what I took away from that was that level of detail maybe isn't in here, but that doesn't mean it's not going to be included in the future.
Right, and the main hardscape area is really flexible space. So there wouldn't necessarily be permanent features.
And do we think of this skating rink or ribbon, whatever we're going to have, as something where parents might want to be watching their kids enjoying the skating? And if so, is there seating available? Or is there going to be seating available for those people who don't want to skate themselves but want to enjoy watching others? Are they going to have to stand around?
I don't think we've talked about that. I don't think we anticipated any kind of glitches or anything like that. Walls and other benches in the area are all fine.
Other questions or comments?
I think it looks absolutely beautiful. In fact, this is a side note. These are the most beautiful renderings I think we've ever seen presented to us. You can get me some framable prints of this, Kelly. I'd appreciate that.
Um, what level of detail? So one thing that I thought maybe would be a nice addition, but maybe it comes to the later stage, is one of those bicycle fix-it stations. I don't know if you've seen them. They have them around. You can kind of put the bike up on there and there's tools inside the fix-it station. Anyway, just as an addition to the bike parking, I thought that would be a cool feature. But again, I don't know if this is the point at which we would make a suggestion like that.
It's something that's not a detail, it's in the plan today.
But easily incorporated.
Yeah, I mean, there's clearly space that can be added anywhere near the bike parking or wherever we think that's a good place to put it.
Quick comments or questions?
I just want to agree that I think this is a gorgeous design. Thank you very much.
Will you move on to the cost?
I think right now, so we love it, right? It's beautiful. The cost estimate is in that three to $4 million range right now. Your current CIP budget was 2.7. And as Confluence said, there's significant items in here that have a high variability of costs. So we'll have more certainty around the ice skating options. The support building is probably one of those that has a big difference in the range of cost depending on its size and how nice of architecture we put onto it and the materials. And then the public art is another one of those that has a significant cost depending on how much of it we put in there and how large of pieces we decide to pursue. So that's something that we'll have a better handle on by February 9th so we're more comfortable with what we're showing now. And if there's a phasing component that could help us bridge any financial gap, that's something that we're exploring also.
Okay, Brian was good with the public comments. See if anyone would like to comment on this tonight before we.
Mayor, I see a hand raised from Adi Babi.
Okay.
Hi there, good. Sorry to keep talking. I figured I might as well comment since I'm here.
Certainly, it's welcome to comment.
But yeah, I think, you know, this is a beautiful design and we'd love to have it. You know, we're biased towards things that are good for kids because we have kids. And so we'd love to have, you know, the water features and the ice skating and all sorts of things like that. And I, you know, I think there's a lot. What's nice about it is there's a lot of things that you can add later if you want to. You know, so a phased approach could be great. You know, you could postpone things such as the art wall or other aspects like that that are not as structural per se. And later on, when there's funds available, you could put those things in. You know, we'd love to get, you know, the main features, you know, as soon as we could so we could use it. And the things that are more portable that can be put in later, you know, they're, I guess I wouldn't want those to hold up such a great project. So just some thoughts.
Thank you, Adi.
Adi, can you just come to our meetings regularly? Thank you.
Anything else, Brian? Anyone else?
Uh, Mayor, I don't see anyone else with their hand raised.
All right, we'll close all the comments. Kelly, can you just restate what you're looking for from council this evening? You're muted, Kelly.
We're really just providing an update tonight. There's not necessarily specific action. It was really if you wanted us to explore anything else for the next week, week and a half as we prepare for February 9th.
Alternative one, if they would move that. It's just basically accepting the update. Knowing that you're going to continue on down the path you are right now.
I'd move alternative one.
Thank you, Gloria.
Second.
David, second, thank you. Hey, for the comments? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Keith. Exciting stuff, very exciting. Okay, let's just go ahead and take a five-minute break before we get on to item number 33. So get back together by around 8:08, 8:09. On to item 33, discussion of Prairie Fire Developers' Concept Plan for 321 State. Does that be Kelly or Vanessa on this one?
Kelly's going to start here in a few minutes. Susan's going to let him in.
Well, I was trying to switch computers. So does it sound better now?
Oh my gosh, yes.
All right, I had to switch machines.
I thought you were home, Kelly.
No.
The nice paneled office.
The power of Zoom. All right, so we're back to discussing our Lytech rental housing project that we have proposed for 321 State Avenue. We selected a partner developer, Prairie Fire, to work with us on a Lytech application, which is due in March of this year. Based on some of the comments on their initial proposal, we asked for updates to the design, and that's what you're receiving tonight. What we're asking for is if City Council finds the updates Uh what we're asking for is if city council finds the updates to be satisfactory, then alternative one, we would move forward with Prairie Fire submitting the application uh to the state in March. And uh I'll walk through those quick changes for you. Initially, the project had, had thirty-six units in it, it was a mix of townhome apartments as well as a, a central primary apartment building as well. Some of the uh feedback that we gave to the developer were, was to, to reposition the larger apartment building, uh to keep the diverse housing unit options, keep the open space that we had seen in the original proposal that we liked, and also maintain that, that Tripp Street frontage is having the, the front door quality or having that interaction and interface with Tripp Street. So what the uh developer, along with their architect, was able to do was to address our comments on changing the architecture and moving the buildings with the, with the proposal that is now in uh the council action forum. I'm trying to bring it up here on screen. For some reason, it's not there. There we go. So what we were able to do is, is building B is the larger apartment building. It was now moved further to the east, next to the driveway on the east side of the site, away from the single family homes. Uh, another thing that happened in the design is, is as staff was looking at this with them, they were able to break up building C and D into the townhome building, uh into smaller parts. And one thing that we were able to do was they are able to add one additional apartment unit to the project, which would take it from thirty-six to thirty-seven units. Uh staff thinks this layout's gonna work really well for having the access controlled on the east side. Uh the proportionality of the open space in the buildings to the single family homes, we think will work really well. Uh there's no real compatibility issues on the east side or the south side of the site. So we think continuing with this design is probably the best approach to the site. Uh, the second part of the update is to look at the architecture. Uh, what the uh ODOMO was able to accomplish with the redesign of the apartment building was to, to break its mass up into three kind of different parts that are interconnected. So in this design, instead of one large building that kind of had a foundational first floor with a second floor that was kind of set uh a little bit askew on the top, we now have uh three different parts of the building, they're using different roof lines to, to kind of accentuate the architecture. But we're also keeping uh kind of that street interface, we're keeping the building materials there. And you can really see in this design how it has a, a pretty good residential appeal to it as well as a, a change in the proportionality and mass of the building. Uh so staff thinks that uh, again, this is a, a, a good change for the project. I think it's addressed uh the primary comments that city council had about the apartment building. I will note, one thing we had in the council action forum was that when we first wrote the report, we were looking at, we hadn't gotten the final designs yet. And uh we had mentioned that stairwells may be interior or exterior. This design, they are internal to the building and that's, that's staff's preference for the project. So that comment in the staff report was a little dated by the time we got the final drawings. Um, but staff is supportive of the design and we think that we can move forward on the Lytech application if, if city council is satisfied. Questions for Kelly? Kelly, can you go back to the perspective, what back, just back one? On the right-hand side of the perspective, um, there appears to be a tall concrete block wall with a railing on top of that. Are they anticipating significant grade changes and having that wall and fencing put in?
On the right side of the drawing?
It'll be on the west side of the um development, is Zoom in just on that?
Oh, I see what you're seeing, I'm sorry, it was underneath my Zoom layout. Um, you know, I, I haven't seen that detail before, it's not shown on the site plan that way. I don't think we're grading the property to require retaining wall, I, I think that's just, I'm not sure what to read into that, it's something we can follow up with them on, but that's not shown on the retaining, or I'm sorry, that retaining wall is not shown on the site plan, so I'm not sure that that's really a, uh, an engineered solution there, if that's just something the architect has in the background of the project.
Okay, uh that's, it'd be good to verify that, because the point is, if, if they are proposing that in order to accomplish the project, that would certainly have an effect on the people, you know, to, uh, single family homes to the uh, to the west, but uh I would agree, I, it doesn't show up on the plans, or it's not noted on the plans, but uh it could be just something which is extraneous, but anyway.
Yeah, I, I guess I was not anticipating that, I mean, that'd be a substant- that hall would be a substantial cost as it's shown in that, that architectural drawing, so we'll definitely follow up with them on that.
Any other comments, questions, input to uh staff on this?
I think that what they did at the, the large apartment building really does address that issue of massing and oddly, it, it almost makes the, the roof lines look like gables. And, and I'm not sure how that could be, but um it's, it's much improved from my perspective.
Okay, here's your input. All right, Brian, we'll go ahead and open up public comment, is anyone who wants to address council and offer input um on this before uh entertain a motion?
I do not see anyone with their hand raised.
Okay, we'll close public input. Council, there is uh two alternatives uh in the council action forum. Is there a motion tonight?
Move alternative one.
Okay. Second invite Coriary. Any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried five one. Thank you Kelly, we'll move on to item thirty-four. So tonight, uh we're returning it to you uh from the summer where we had first reviewed a request for a fringe plan amendment and allow for annexation of the building that's located at five eightieth and highway thirty in the county. And it's, we called it the former Caramolee Building. When city council looked at this, looked at it this summer, you said it was okay to proceed with a fringe plan amendment and to proceed with annexation, and to do the annexation, we had to include some other properties that we had previously received a consent to annex. So what we're asking for tonight is for the city council to affirm uh moving forward the annexation as described in this report. We will note that one additional property as requested to be part of the annexation that we did not discuss this summer. So just to the west of the Caramolee Building is a vacant piece of property that's owned by Bankers Trust. Uh and they have petitioned to be included in the annexation, so that area is shown in the graphic of the staff report. Uh and, and staff finds it to, to be logical to include that at this time. Uh there isn't necessarily a, a development project that goes along with that, but it is a, a piece of land that is, that fits with the rest of the annexation. And so I'm bringing that up on the screen so you can see the area we're talking about. So the area in blue would be the area that we're annexing. Uh, we, we're not recommending an eighty-twenty tonight, uh we, we could annex some additional territory with this because of the size of it. However, we don't necessarily have utilities in five eightieth at, five eightieth um at this time, um they're definitely served by, by rural water and on, on septic systems. And it doesn't really impede future annexation either, if we were to annex to the east on the other side of five eightieth in the future, there's definitely territory there. And we do have a consent to annex for the piece, that is, the larger piece on the north boundary of this annexation, if we needed to execute that in the future as well. Uh so if council initiates this annexation, we'll move forward consistent with the discussion this, this past summer with a concurrent fringe plan amendment and then um annexation.
But Kelly, my, my perspective on these annexations is that if, if we have an opportunity to do an eighty-twenty now and we forfeit that opportunity to go with the voluntary annexation, is there a potential downside for the future in terms of the way in which the configuration of, of land can come in? What's the downside of doing the eighty-twenty?
Uh, the downside would, to the city, there probably really isn't any, other than we would be taking over uh really the substantial maintenance of five eightieth, even though we don't really have uh much tax base or rationale for, for wanting to maintain that, that extra half a mile of road in that area. Uh, I think in this case, we're not preventing ourselves from annexing large developable pieces in the future. Uh, when the highway thirty interchange is redone, can you, the, the new frontage road and interchange is really gonna kind of go right through the middle where the blue line is shown, uh kind of as that common boundary in those four properties. So that's gonna be a new road that goes through that area and then provides the frontage road access to the west towards Cornerstone. Uh and that same interchange is gonna be to the east of five eightieth and how it's designed. So um it's, it's possible that some of those properties on five eightieth don't really ever need to be in the city, uh just because of the design of the interchange in the future. And if they do need to be in there, I think that territory can be annexed as necessary with other property to the east.
That was a very cogent answer, I appreciate that, it's very satisfactory, I just, um, I'm just sort of wired to want to protect the city from any unanticipated consequences. I don't care about maintenance in the short term, what I care about is if, if having situations where we can't make a contiguous um line on our boundary because we, we're worried about maintenance for a couple of years. Um, so I want to think long-term, but if, that was a very good answer, I'm, I'm satisfied with that.
Yeah, I, I think the big difference is these pieces of land are so large, it's easier to annex forty acre pieces of land than, than oftentimes we're dealing with smaller pieces. And it's, it's a little bit harder to stitch it together, so eighty-twenty is more valuable in those cases.
Great, thank you very much.
Other questions? Okay, Brian, we'll open up uh public input on this item, anyone that wants to address council on this topic?
Mayor, I do not see anyone with their hand raised.
Thank you, we'll close public comment. Kelly, one question, uh um as this continues to move forward, the property owners understand that there is no city water or sewer in this area and that it may not be forthcoming for quite some time. Um, so will that be memorialized some way in, in writing or as part of a uh process? Or is that, or, or a notice sent to them, so we have something on, on paper, so let's say someone says, well, why you annex me on paying uh city taxes, why am I not getting services out here?
They're not paying a sewer bill or a water bill, that's why. Uh, so the, the owner of the Caramolee piece is well aware of that, they're on central Iowa water right now and, and they want to stay on that because of the, and, and the other vacant land, they're also very much aware that there isn't currently utilities, so they have to annex because they already gave us a consent to annex for prior subdivision. So whether we have city utilities or not, they're obligated to annex at our request and, and they're very well aware of that.
Just trying to avoid any misunderstanding in the future where someone says, hey, I bought this property, I thought we were gonna have water and sewer. Um, but you're satisfied, that's, 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 I'm not an issue then, that's good.
Yeah, and I think the, the vacant land, the real question will become, it gets to stay ag when it's in the city, but at any future date when we look to, to rezone to industrial, that's when the decision has to be made by the city about water and sewer utilities being available.
All right, all right, any further questions or comments, otherwise entertain a uh, a motion?
Move alternative one.
That's your?
Second.
Arden, second, thank you. Any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Motion carried. Thank you Kelly. Moving on to item thirty-five, the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-six capital improvement plan, Dwayne and Nancy.
We're here, this is the evening for public input.
We're not asking council to take any action on this, you'll take final action at your budget wrap-up session. We usually have this opportunity for the public to respond to our presentation of the document, which we did last week. No actions required at this time and the citizens are still able to provide you input, even if they don't tonight, all the way up to the February ninth meeting.
I just thought that Dwayne was gonna go ahead and give us a nice little speech or some kind of a spiel or something tonight, so.
We did that last week.
About on before eight, I was planning on that.
Okay, all right, we're gonna open up public comment, is there anyone who would like to address council with respect to the capital improvement plan as current draft form?
Mayor, I do not see anyone with their hand raised.
All right, we'll go ahead and we will close public comment. Um, Steve, you want to review what other opportunities there may exist for the public to comment on this before it's adopted?
Again, I would suggest that they um can contact the city council directly by email. They could send uh their comments to the director of finance for the city of Ames or to me or the members of the city manager's office and we'll pass the, that information on to the council.
Very good. Thank you, Dwayne, thank you Nancy.
Thank you.
We'll move on now to item thirty-six, hearing on the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, Vanessa.
Evening everyone, um this report is normally due by the end of September, but because of the pandemic and COVID and having to move on utilizing our CARE funds, HUD extended it to the end of December and I needed another month, so we're just now getting that report before you. It basically covers the time period of July of two thousand nineteen through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty. And uh a major project we were working on that and continue to work on is the development of our Baker subdivision. And so um that's kind of the gist of that uh paper report for that period.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Vanessa? All right, I declare the public hearing on the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty consolidated annual performance and evaluation report to be opened. Is anybody that wishes to address council on this particular topic?
Mayor, I do not see anyone with their hand raised.
Thank you Brian, we'll close the uh hearing, and the acting of motion or resolution approving the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty caper.
Don't move.
Brownman?
Amber, second.
Uh Amber, seconded, thank you, roll call.
Garten.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Coriary.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Amy Hansen.
Aye.
Bedger.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, item thirty-seven, any uh background or information on this one, Vanessa for council before we open?
Just want the council to know that um we have, were awarded another round of CARES funding, funding through HUD. Uh there's actually three rounds we're eligible for, we're in the process of finishing round one that was directly funded by HUD. We're also eligible to receive round two that's being administered through the state of Iowa. And then there's another round that's being funded through HUD, so of these, uh this third round, uh we're looking at wanting to continue our rent, mortgage and utility relief assistance program. To date, we've helped about a hundred, hundred and four households and uh close to spending all, uh all of our money down on that program. And we still have a waiting list of applications to process. So we wanted to make sure that we could get the third round application in, so. So we wanted to make sure that we could get the third round application in so that we can continue this program. Uh, because this was funded during our nineteen twenty program year. HUD requires us to go back and continue to amend that um annual action plan. So hopefully this will be the last amendment of this plan. And the next plan will be uh closer to the time we're we're actually in. So um, that's where we are.
Thank you. Any questions for Vanessa?
Vanessa, has the administration of those funds turned out to be um easy or have you been facing challenges with that?
It's 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 a little challenging. I think one of the challenging parts is the duplication of benefits. Uh, we uh ended up adjusting our program. Initially HUD allowed us to help people up to uh three months. And then they allowed it to go up to six months. So we uh initially started helping people with six months. Uh, because we felt that three months, they would probably be back again if if they were laid off and and still up for uh disconnection. So we funded people for six months. Uh, we're now getting a different level of applications uh this time around for COVID. That we'll have to look at changing some of our guidelines to accommodate. It's just a little different, but we're still, and then IFA, the Iowa Finance Authority, is no longer administering their program. I believe that ended at the end of December. Uh, and the other challenge is the moratorium uh that was going to end in December, and then they extended it to end of January. Now I'm hearing that it's extended again. So we have a lot of people that's really panicking about um being um having their um rents uh and they're being evicted from their housing. So uh, trying to work with landlords to kind of cover the gaps of all these timeframes has been a challenge.
Thank you.
Okay, declare the uh public hearing and a third substantial amendment to the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty annual action plan and citizen participation plan to be open. So anyone who wants to address council on this particular item?
Mayor, I do not see any hands raised.
Thank you, Brian. We'll clear the public hearing to be closed. I entertain a motion moving the resolution approving third substantial amendment.
I'm moved.
Second.
All right, Rachel and Rowan, thank you. Roll call, please.
Dunk.
Aye.
Coriary.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Judy Hansen.
Aye.
Betcher.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Thank you, Vanessa.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate you.
All right, moving on to item thirty eight, hearing on entering into an amended sewer revenue loan and disbursement agreement. Tracy?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, um, item thirty eight is the hearing on entering into a uh modified uh loan agreement. We use SRF funding for our sanitary sewer projects. And um with that rehabilitation, we have a opportunity to get the water quality um funding with uh as a grant application, but ends up we modify a loan and then that modified loan is uh the principal additional principal for the um the water quality project. And so we're just now catching up on some paperwork with modifying that loan so that uh we can fund that uh city hall project that we did with the parking lot.
Thank you. Questions for Tracy? All right, declare the public hearing on entering into an amended sewer revenue loan and disbursement agreement. And borrowing money, they're under a principal amount not to exceed six million seventy five thousand dollars to be open. Brian, is there anybody that wants to address council on this particular item this evening?
Mayor, I do not see anyone with their hand raised.
Thank you, Brian. We'll declare a public hearing to be closed. Entertain a motion moving resolution approving entering into an amended sewer revenue loan and disbursement agreement.
Of approach.
Uh, Amber and Tim. Roll call.
Coriary.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Judy Hansen.
Aye.
Betcher.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Dunk.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to item thirty nine, hearing to authorize potential use of eminent domain authority if necessary. Tracy?
Yes, we have continued to meet with uh the landowners in the flood mitigation area and been answering their questions or going to follow up. We have uh one landowner that's requested copies of the plans. We're working on those uh right now and going to submit later this week for the um permitting through the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer and DNR, which is a typical um permit process. So uh the landowners, um, some have said that they would uh prefer us to purchase instead of purchasing an easement. And so we're continuing to work with them and they should be starting to meet with uh the appraisers now.
So it's quite, but quite, some of these are obtaining easements versus actually purchasing the property outright. Is that correct?
Uh, there is a combination. Some are easements and some are uh acquisitions or partial acquisitions. And so there's some of each on this project. And this uh, the hearing tonight is part of our uh use of FEMA funding and a requirement of that federal process.
Right, declare a public hearing to authorize potential use of eminent domain authority if necessary to obtain easements and acquire land for flood mitigation river flooding project to be open. Brian, is anybody indicating interest to address council on this item tonight?
Yes, mayor, we have a couple of hands raised. The first one is Gary. Gary, you can unmute yourself, state your name and address and begin your comments.
Gary, you're muted. I don't know if you've, there you go.
Is your audio working, Gary? All right, Brian, let's just go ahead and and go to the other individual and then come back to carry them.
Okay, the next individual is Piper Wall.
All right, I hope I'm unmuted. Uh.
You are good, Piper. Very good. Name and address, please.
Piper Wall at nine twelve Clark Avenue in Ames. I'm the spouse of James Howe, whose business is Howes Welding and Metal Fabric at eight eleven South Duff. Um, he would potentially be the second hand way up on this Zoom. Um, so one one internet, two hands. Uh, so this goes back to the twenty sixteen plan that was referred to as full channel shaping. Uh, we have an email, nice email from David Martin indicating that Tracy Warner's office would be planning outreach and and we've had communications. Uh, part of that said, there would be opportunities to address specific concerns if you have problems with the specific plans. And we're now in January twenty sixth of twenty twenty one without specific plans. We've had conceptual overlays, but as she mentioned, these plans, the actual, you know, here's the drawings that you build from have not been put together, have not been available then because they're not put together. They're working on them for DNR and county and the Corps of Engineers, but there's no actual specific plans. And here we are talking about the possibility of eminent domain, which I'm completely not in favor of. It's my understanding that eminent domain is to be used for the public good. Not as a way for the government to be able to just take private property to benefit a set of businesses. And if if the, when they arrive, specific plans are not convincing enough to the people who actually own that land and are along Squaw Creek and are impacted by the flooding. If you can't convince them that this isn't a good plan, I I just don't feel that it's right for the government to say, ah, we'll just shortcut that just because we have FEMA money and a timeline and just take that property. So I I I realize FEMA says you have to have a hearing about considering eminent domain, and I'm strongly in favor of saying, no, we won't use eminent domain because except having a timeline and having money does not make something wrong become something right. I think in this instance, using eminent domain would be contrary to its very reason to have it. Um, with that, and I'm I'm not saying that that there that there's anything wrong with anything the staff is doing. They're working on plans. We want to see the plans. They've they've been in interaction. We have concept drawings. But if you can't come up with specific plans that are convincing to the landowners who are affected, I just don't see approving the ability to just take it as an acceptable option. That's that's all I have.
Thank you, Piper. Brian, I don't know if uh if um Jim Howe is going to also jump on. So if Piper raises her hand again, that's for Jim Howe, he um the one internet connection, you can bring them back in after Gary speaks. Okay, Gary. Uh, unmute yourself and address council. Gary, you're still muted. Hello?
So mayor, last night in the school board meeting, they had a similar problem where people had an older version of Zoom. And I wonder if that's a possibility here.
Okay, um. One option too for Gary is if he can't upgrade Zoom right away, uh, you could call in on our toll free number and be let in. So we're gonna if you want, the phone number to call in is eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine. And you're gonna have to enter the Zoom meeting ID of eight two six five nine three zero two three. So we're gonna go ahead and move on back to uh Piper Wall, Gary Halt. You can possibly call in and uh participate that way. Brian, is Piper, did she raise her hand again?
Yes.
Okay.
She can go ahead.
Hello, uh, James Howe, nine twelve Clark. I'm the owner of Howes Welding and Metal Fabrication at eight eleven South Duff. I'm sure I'm kind of a fly in the ointment here, but I guess a couple of things that concern me is we keep building up and building up and building up since the ninety three flood. But yet now we want to try to solve the problem by widening the river and all this, which is, I mean, again, I'm sure we're gonna lose on this deal, but we gotta quit building on a flood plain if we're trying to mitigate flood problems. We've added more fill in the last, since the two thousand ten flood than we filled from ninety three on to two thousand ten. Hundreds upon hundreds upon hundreds of truckloads of dirt are going back in. When we built, we had to beat the hundred year flood. We built just the building up, so we did not affect our neighbors. But we minimized the impact our neighbors of what we did. There's a lot of people downstream that if I was downstream and we were doing this, I'd be a little upset because we're gonna throw the water onto them a lot quicker. Now there's still the problem with the thirty bridge. And that's supposed to be in twenty twenty two, I think Tracy said. Which we're just gonna dump onto Cambridge and all, which is not fair to our neighbors. I just my thing is that when we were building the bridge wider to to incorporate the bike path, I asked specifically if they could dig out the two thirds of the bridge that are not being used because of sandbars. I can stand on the sandbars on both sides of the bridge and touch the girders. But they said that DNR in no way, shape or form would let them do that at that time. So I'm not sure what's changed since that that we now can do it. Again, I'm just a a fly in the ointment, but we are adding more fill every day. Hundreds of acres of fill compared to digging out part of the channel to solve this problem. I just, I don't quite understand why we're doing it that way. Yes, that's my say.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate your comments.
Yep.
Okay, Brian, is Gary trying to call in?
I do notice a new number joining us. If that's you, Gary, and you want to speak, just press star nine and I'll unmute you. Okay, you can press unmute and begin your comments.
Hello?
There you go. Third time's charged.
Yeah, thank you, mayor and council. My name is Gary Schwager. I live in Cedar Rapids. I uh I am the owner of RL Enterprises, which owns the property that is leased to Red Lobster. I'd like to thank Tracy Peterson, municipal engineer, and also Jeff Sogi, the land acquisition agent for CGA. They have both been quite responsible, responsive to my inquiries about the uh the site plans. Um, I I understand the the reason for the um mitigation project. And I don't have any specific questions about that. But I am concerned about the how I will be remunerated for the loss of my property. Or at least part of the property, which is going to be equivalent of a a piece of a space equivalent to roughly sixteen parking spaces. And the long term effect on what is really a a nicely situated commercial property. And also the effect that it will have on the tenant with their disruption of business while work is being done. Uh, these are certainly uh important considerations that I have and uh I I hope they will be resolved um without uh without um uh much pain or difficulty.
Very good. Thank you for persevering.
Thank you.
Brian, is anybody else?
Mayor, I don't see any other hands raised.
Okay, we'll declare the public hearing to be closed. Tracy, can you uh make comments on the the public input received from uh Piper, Jim and Gary?
Absolutely. Yes. So um, let's start with Gary and then I can get to Piper and Jim's. Uh, so we met with Gary and we appreciate him driving over from Cedar Rapids and walking the site with us. Um, he expressed the northernmost parking spaces. There's a row of sixteen that are right against uh Squaw Creek. And uh, he expressed concern with uh the timing at construction, the impacts at construction and the loss of those parking spaces at that time. We assured him that will all be considered with the appraisals um and the cost impacts. We also forwarded on to him a uh layout of a parking um revision on the south side of his business that would replace fifteen of those sixteen parking spaces. So overall, he would have a net loss of one space on the site. Um, we also had talked about timing of construction that we could designate in the plans that we could uh make sure that those parking spaces are revised in whole prior to the loss of the sixteen spaces and the work in the creek. Um, there's going to be a massive retaining wall there, uh, and that's why the loss of the sixteen parking spaces. And so um, we've uh continued, we've forwarded that to him. I believe he's sent that to Red Lobster Corporate and was um getting their input as well. So all of that is uh continuing to be part of the um appraisers uh consideration and will be part of the compensation and start of negotiation in that compensation package. And then uh getting to uh Piper's um concern of the plans uh not being completed yet. We are uh very, very close. We've been fine tuning the very close, we've been fine-tuning the hydraulic model, and we also have been working out the details of that massive retaining wall that I was just talking about, as well as the grading. And so those plans are gonna be available very soon, in the very near future, likely next week, if not before, as we get those submitted to Iowa DNR and Army Corps of Engineers. We'll continue, we have already been providing grading plans and showing the impacts of the project to the landowners, as they've continued. Piper has a little bit more knowledge than some of the other property owners and requested the entire set of plans, and so just working out the final details of those, that set of plans is why we have not provided those yet. Our intent, as far as eminent domain, our intent is to voluntary settlement and to negotiate with people. We need to go through the process, the appraisers need to meet with the landowners. Once we then send them the appraisals, we cannot contact them for 10 days. They can contact us, but we cannot, we have to give them space to consider the negotiations the land offers and all of the documents that they will receive. So that's part of the federal process. We met just last week with Jim Howe and his parents, his parents are the landowners on this parcel, and so we were continuing, they had questions as well, and Jim brought up a lot of the points that his parents were having conversation as well. This is one of them that we had said, do you want it to be a permanent easement, or do you want it to be an acquisition? And his mother had a preference for acquisition, so that'll all be continuing through the conversation as we continue to answer the questions. I don't have an answer for that, Jim's comment about, you know, with the South Duff Bridge widening and why they would not enable them to clean out the bridge, other than, I think that specific contractor was hired for that structural component of widening the bridge, and it was by the DOT, so I don't know if it just wasn't their scope or what, but we have a whole corridor with the hydraulic model, we've done all the environmental clearances, and so that in-depth maybe is why they weren't able to, because they didn't have all of those environmental clearances at that time, I'm just not sure. The downstream impacts of Cambridge, that was a topic that we talked about last week with the capital improvements plan, and continuing to look at watershed and reducing flows in both Skunk River watershed as well as Squaw Creek watershed, and so we're continuing, you know, through the CIP work to continue to reduce those flows, and so that addresses that Cambridge concern as well. We will continue to work with Jim and the appraiser, I believe they met with the appraiser this week, and so I'm sure it'll take a little while for them to write the reports before we then get them the offer, but in the meantime, we will get them sets of plans, you know, and continue to get them the information that they're asking for.
Thank you.
And glad to answer any questions.
Thank you.
I don't know if it would help any of the council members, I pulled up the Google Map satellite image of this, and it helped me because on the diagram you provide us, there's a reference to Highland Heights Apartments direct west of where the Red Lobster is, and for the life of me, I couldn't remember any apartments back there.
All right.
They're not, they're, that's just space there, there's parking there to the west of the Red Lobster. I don't know if that's helpful to, if maybe they also want to pull up the Google Map. The portion of the property from the house, the, it does not appear to me that this would involve any of the land where I can see vehicles now. Is this, is a line being drawn in a way that will impact the functionality of Howe's welding?
That's a great question. So when we had it, we had met with Jim, and then he had that same question, and so we had the surveyor go out and put stakes on the land, and so we've walked it a couple more times with him since then, and it's my understanding that everything that would be within that area is movable. It does not impact the drive and the circulation around. He had asked prior for some planting screening to be placed as part of the project to screen the Red Lobster view, I guess, is how I would put it, and so we had agreed to that, but then he was concerned about some, some snow removal and continuing, so we may do just a little bit of a break with a bit of that screening landscaping. But otherwise, we've been able to talk about, you know, possible access through his property for, during construction, and then also the long-term impacts or long-term, what would it look like?
I would agree, the conscientiousness of trying to accommodate an existing business, and just sort of the unique configuration of his business on his property, it really helped me to see the aerial view of that, to see how that lays out. And I just have one question, Piper raised a fascinating question, we don't normally talk about sort of the philosophical use of eminent domain, is Mark on the line tonight?
Yes, he appears to be.
So, Mark, it's late, but just, could you just give us a quick, just a quick opinion? This is not a, so Kilo versus New London said that we can use eminent domain for private purposes, but that's not what this is, this is for purposes of working on the stream and the bank stabilization. Could you, you want to spot the legal basis for eminent domain here, just so it's clear to people that are watching?
Yeah, the legal basis for eminent domain is that the government has the right to acquire property, to take property but then pay for it, fair market value, for a public purpose. So the property has to be used for a public purpose, and this is very much a public purpose.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Other questions? All right, I would entertain a motion on the resolution authorizing use of eminent domain authority if necessary.
So moved.
Second.
Move by Garten, second by Coriary. Roll call, please.
Garten.
Aye.
Katie Hansen.
Aye.
Betcher.
No.
Garten.
Aye.
Junk.
Aye.
Coriary.
Aye.
Thank you.
I have one final question for Tracy. Tracy, where are you finding 15 parking spots to the south of Red Lobster now? Looks like it's all parking lot.
Right, and it is, we ended up turning them, so the parking spaces now you pull in east-west, and so instead, yeah, they would be a north-south configuration, double-loaded. Well, we'll show you a plan eventually, but it was a pretty creative solution from our design consultants.
Well, I was, probably they're wondering about that a long time ago, that's amazing you were able to find an additional parking, well done.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on to item 40, ordinances, entertain a motion on third passage and adoption of order number 4430 establishing a new industrial zoning district to be known as the Intensive Industrial Zone in Chapter 29, Article 9 of the Ames Municipal Code.
Move on 13.
Second.
All right, Brown and Amber, thank you, roll call.
Katie Hansen.
Aye.
Betcher.
Aye.
Horton.
Aye.
Junk.
Aye.
Coriary.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, moving on to disposition of communications to council. There are four items this evening, council, the first is a memo from Cory regarding response to the auditorium marquee conversation that was had last year. Any questions for staff, or just take this under advisement?
I like the idea of having a sign of some sort to advertise activities that are in the auditorium or otherwise important to the community, I think that would be a real benefit, and it's not super important to me that it be hanging on the side of the building in marquee style. So what, how could we proceed with this to further investigate it, come up with a design that we think would actually serve our communication needs well?
It depends on how long you want to wait, you'll be talking about the budget, so you want to put money in the budget if you want to do it within the next 18 months, and then we could explore the design and all those type of things, location on the city hall spot. So within the next two weeks, I think you're gonna have to make a decision whether you want a budget for it.
So one possibility is that, you know, we spoke of, I mean, we requested that you recommend a grants program for capital things, I mean, this could maybe partially be funded out of that sort of thing.
Well, I could trade way to fund it, we could talk about that budget time.
I mean, next week, it's next week, you know, or two weeks, we'll, we'll discuss it.
Next week.
Bring the budget hearings, you mean? Okay, thanks.
Item two, memo from, or email from Keith Aronson.
Are we currently monitoring what happens to those properties in Campus Town?
Which properties are you referring to?
Well, the ones that, I think it's come and go, maybe selling. Because obviously, we've been talking about the plaza in Campus Town. So I just wondered, are we paying attention to what's happening with that, or not?
We're always paying attention. People have to come to us with the information, yes, I'm sure there's discussion about a new site.
Well, I don't know that we need to do anything with this letter, I mean, or email, other than responding, thank you for sending it, but I think it's good for us to monitor that sales situation.
Okay, we will do so. Maybe we'll send a letter to, or an email back to Keith, acknowledging receipt of his email, and go from there. Email from Luke Jensen, request for downtown housing on 6th Street, North of City Hall. You've all heard council's, I mean, staff's recommendation regarding the use of that property. Steve, what do you recommend on this, just?
Well, unfortunately, it flies in the face of what we think the use should be, so I think you might want to have the mayor write a letter just telling you at this time what plans are to use it for a public parking area, if you agree with our recommendation.
I like the concepts of housing at the time they were made, but with the plaza, I think we should, at this point, leave this as parking.
Okay, council's desire from Sam Letterston now, advising accordingly. Can I get a motion on that then?
I move you send a letter or an email to Luke Jensen expressing council's desire to use that property for parking.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, thank you. Those in favor say aye.
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 Be opposed? Carrie, thank you, and then the last one is letter from Homer Gertz, and with council's permission, I thought I would just, I would respond back to him and acknowledge, give us my idea of what is transpiring, and I did look on Beacon Snyder and the property in Campus Town, actually has a new owner out of Wisconsin, so maybe we'll see some movement. I have no inside information, but hopefully we'll see some movement on that, so. Okay, good, council comments this evening, David tonight, anything?
Regarding the Aquatic Center, I'm happy with the way that turned out, I'm really happy to see the enthusiasm for the two-story building. I guess I was hoping we'd spend a little more effort getting there, but still, I think this is, it's good to aim for the things that we really want, and I hope the finances work out great for us. Nothing else.
Oh, yeah.
I would agree with David, everything that he said, and I think that the neighborhood, Oak to Riverside neighborhood seems to be enthusiastic about this project, and that's a good thing. I also would like to just acknowledge that we had a sad loss in our community with the death of one of our sorority sisters, and I hope that we are sending our condolences and sympathy to the family members, and to everyone in the Greek community who, and other students who were friends with her. That's all I've got.
Brown.
Nothing for me tonight, thanks.
Rachel?
Um, nothing tonight, thanks.
Thank you. Tim?
Had some snow last night, in case anyone didn't notice that, just continued appreciation for our snow crews who worked through the night to make this happen, and we get a few emails from people who are frustrated with that, but it's a lot of snow, and I thought given just the rate at which this was coming down, I thought they did an outstanding job to have the arterials open this morning when people went to work, so kudos to the city staff.
Thank you. Amber?
Um, I just wanted to give a shout out to the Ames School Board leadership and teachers. They've had to deal with a lot of challenges in the last several months, and they've dealt with it with a lot of thoughtfulness and a lot of civility, which wasn't always the case from some in our community. So I just want to commend them for their work on the difficult 12 months, and I know I'm happy that my kids are part of the Ames School District, and I think we can all be proud that we have such a great district here in Ames.
Well said. Nicole?
Nothing for me.
All right. Okay, I have, I would just agree with what was been said tonight, and also it was memorable with this recognition ceremony too, and just the bravery, heroic actions of the three gentlemen, and heartwarming to hear that, so. All right, last item on the agenda this evening is going into closed session. Tim, do you want to ask the question for our attorney?
Mr. Lambert, do we have legal, illegal justification regarding a closed session?
Yes, we do, under Iowa Code Section 21.51(c), we can go into closed, the council could go into closed session to discuss matters presently or threatened to be in litigation.
Based on that justification, I move we go into closed session.
Second.
Second by Amber, roll call, please.
Betcher.
Aye.
Garten.
Aye.
Junk.
Aye.
Coriary.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Katie Hansen.
Aye.
Hey, council, you have a, I believe you have a unique link to get into a new Zoom meeting. Zoom meeting.[572.79]
[443.62]
Uh, entertain emotion regarding what was discussed in, uh, both.
I would have moved that we ask staff to proceed with the action, uh, that was discussed in closed session.
Second.
Move by Cori, I think my jump. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Most opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried five one. Alright, didn't give me a chance to ask the question. Alright. We are adjourned. Thank you everybody. We will see you Friday, two o'clock, budget hearings. Hold on.